Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 26th Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll read the agenda. 7:00 PM Citizens Input. 7:10 Public Hearing CBS Scene Patriot Place LLC Doing Business as CBS Sporting Club. Alteration of Premises and Approval of Management Agreement. 7:25 Public Hearing Hughes Entertainment, Inc., Doing Business as Laser Craze slash Extreme Craze. 7:40 PM Napontic Reservoir NRRC, Inc., Discussion Final Draft Permanent Solution Statement. 8:10 Saga Hibachi Steakhouse Extension of Hours. 8:20 Informational Update New Map and Parcel Numbering System for All Real Estate Properties in Foxborough. 8:30 Discussion of Regional Dispatch in the Semirac. 8:50 Discussion with Advisory Committee Members Bernard Dumont and Stephanie McGowan. 9:00 PM Selectmen's Update. 9:05 Town Manager's Update. 9:10 Assistant Town Manager's Update. And then followed by a few action items. Leah, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
7 o'clock, anybody here for Citizens Input? Janet, if you can come up, either sit at the table or speak up there right into the microphone. State your name, please.
Janet Kennedy, 25 Focasset Street. What I'm here about today is I know you can't talk about it because it's not on your agenda, but what I'm wondering is if you would have put this on your agenda. It's about protecting the canine that we have. He protects us. We need to protect him and his handler. Because I was down the cape and just put a few about what happened to that canine and the police officer, Don and Yarmuth. So what I have right here, I took copies of what they're talking about, the canine camera, and also I sent a Mandarin link. And on the link, it's the video where the police officers, Don and Yarmuth, talk about the camera. To me, it's a need here, not a want, because the need is to protect the canine and the police officer. So can I pass these out?
Yeah.
You hand them to Mandarin, she'll take care of it.
Okay.
If I just need to be easier. Thanks, Janet. Anybody else for Citizens Input? Okay, we're gonna probably have to do a few action items. Public hearing is at 7:10. Can I clear up a few action items?
Sure. So the first one, move to approve--
Looking at Doc, I'm sorry.
I was wondering why you--
Not my job anymore.
Move to approve the gift donation of $35 from anonymous to the Council on Aging Human Services.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to accept the gift donation of beautification services and Mill Street property to the Recreation Department from 360 PR Plus.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to approve the roadway name change from Foolish Hill Circle to Barrows Lane in the River Ridge subdivision.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
All right. Move to approve a 5K road race run slash walk, starting and ending at 171 Mechanic Street on Saturday, May 4th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
All right. And the final one, another block party application. Move to approve a block party application by Amy Spogenati of 22 East Minab for Phillips Lane on August 25th, 2018, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, with a rain date of August 26th, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Last one.
So can we start a public hearing a few minutes earlier, or do we have to wait for 7:10? Everybody here for the 7:10 public hearing?
Okay. Move to open the public hearing for CBS Scene Patriot Place LLC DBA CBS Sporting Club for Alteration of Premises and Approval of Management Agreement.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Just make sure when we're speaking, we speak directly into the microphone so everybody, the millions of viewers at home can hear it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Stephen Miller, Jeremy Popkin, and Mike Murphy tonight is Ed Kane. Chris Klein is the current manager, director, and will continue on the licenses manager, director. Ed Kane is the principal of the proposed management company. Ryan Early is the manager of Patriot Place. Also with us, you wanna come up? Charlie Kane, who's our Ed's brother and director of security for the proposed management group. I'll give you a brief overview and then have Ed and Chris give you more detailed plans of what we're talking about, seeking your approval to change the configuration of the existing licensee, which is on three floors, to basically remove the about 300-plus seats and kitchen from the second floor and do a total remodel of the third floor. And we're keeping the first floor generally the same. It's operated as a function facility and comedy club for the past several years and will continue to operate that way. The second floor will be food and beverage storage and there'll be no, it'll become office space, there'll be no licensed premise on that floor, no alcohol, other than the storage of food and beverage. And on the third floor will be a brand-new facility with approximately 180 seats inside and 106 seats in the patio. The approximate cost to do all this was $2.6 million, and it was funded by the licensee and also CBS Corporation. I think as we mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago when we sought your approval for a change of DBA, there was a change of focus in the location from CBS Television to CBS Sports, hence the name change to the Sporting Club. Also, the restaurant was there for 10 years. It was tired, it needed a change, and the combined ownership group of CBS Corp. and the Kraft Group had the opportunity to enlist a first-class restaurant, well-known operator to come in and manage the premises. So, once again, we're seeking your approval for the alteration of premises and the agreement, and the approval of the management agreement. I'd like to have Ed and Chris give you a brief overview of what the third floor will be like. And we have some renderings, and do you wanna, Chris, do you wanna give them a menu, copies of menus, and the--
Yes.
Hold the, put the menus in the--
This backs.
Yeah.
Yep. We have some rendering, some furniture details, the layout, the floor layout. And thank you for having us, members of the board, and these are quite, it's quite a nice facility. I haven't been here in my first 10 years. Congratulations. I'm Ed Kane, I'm one of the principals for Big Night Entertainment, and this is one of the projects we've been working on. We worked on with CBS and the Kraft family. It's an amazing opportunity for us to kind of showcase what we think we do really well and curate the space in a kind of very advanced way. I have some renderings here. Well, I want to introduce my brother Charlie because it's important. We've expanded as a company, Big Night Entertainment. We have gone to 1,000 employees now. We brought up my younger brother, and Charlie was a state trooper for 30 years. He was actually head of drug enforcement here in Norfolk County for years, and I convinced him in January to retire. And he came to work for us, and he's director of security for the company, which is obviously a very important position for us as we grow and we do facilities like this and other places. We have 250 security people that work for us now, and as we expand, it's one, you know, in this world that we take very seriously. So he's come on board and it's been amazing, and kind of retraining staff on all levels, as well as kind of reevaluating our entire process for how we look at people, how we have cameras, and how we evaluate if we have incidents on any given night, we go back and we'll retrace the steps and look at them. So he's been amazingly on board, and it's fun to work with your brother. This facility is an amazing space, money was spent on the third floor. As Steve said, the facility on the third, so the second floor is out, we moved the kitchen to the third floor. So it's a brand-new kitchen, brand-new storage facility on the third floor. And then we had an opportunity to fill in the hole that was in the floor, which gave us the entire floor plate on the third floor. And that's where it really gave us the room to create what we created. And it's, you know, a stylized, highly fashioned sports bar. All our facilities, we try to make them very female-friendly and to appeal to families, to women, and to make sure they're flexible and that they work during game days, as well as they work for dinner on other nights. The menu we're proposing here is kind of a very fun gastropub menu. So I think you have a copy of it in front of you. It covers kind of all the greatest hits. We brought in a new corporate chef, and it's his first menu he's done, but he's great. He worked with Chris, and I think you all know Chris, who has been an amazing addition to kind of helping us and our team. This is the layout here, and the outside seating, so if you look on the lower part, that's all the outside seating there. And we've created, yeah, so we've created more comfortable seating, we kept the outside bar there pretty much the same. We converted it, so we made it handicap accessible, which it wasn't. So the whole left side of the outside bar is handicap accessible. In fact, thanks to the Kraft family, because we really did an amazing job, I think, here from an accessibility standpoint, to create really, because it's a lot of layers that I'm gonna talk to you about, but to make it fully accessible to everyone, so every kind of piece of this, of this facility you can get to. So when you come in the front door, you come in the front door there and you'll take a left, but in front of you would be a little private dining room right there, and then you're greeted by the hostess stand on the left. And then kind of the centerpiece of the room is a 25-foot LED screen, which is right behind the bar. So the bar in the front is 25 LED screen right there, which is 2 millimeter. It's an amazing high definition. It'll be a great place to look at, to watch any game or any event. And then around it is very highly stylized, I think you have pictures of it, furniture. So, and it's all raised. So you're not blocked by anyone, you're not, it's not overcrowded. We have the floor, which is right there in front of the bar, and then around it is kind of beautiful raised seating. And then we kept basically the same bathrooms that were there, so we didn't really change any of that around. And on the backside is a full kitchen, and we did a mezzanine area above the kitchen, which is in the back. Can you point to that, Chuck? So the kitchen is all back there, and then we did a mezzanine area above it, so we needed the storage space there. It's not a huge space, 6,000 square feet, 196 seats on the inside, 106 seats on the outside. In fact, I think we gave up a few seats on the outside to make it a little bit more comfortable. But that was really our vision, to kind of create something that was sports bar and really kind of works during the day and during the times that there's, you know, sporting events, but is also a great place to go eat, that it really reflects kind of a stylized, interesting design. And I was there today, and I think it's really pretty magnificent looking. And if you've seen our history of the things we've done, we've won tons of design awards, and I think we'll win something for this. So it's kind of a new interpretation of what a sports bar would be, and again, very female-friendly, fully accessible. And I think, I think we'll knock it out of the park here, or whatever you say in football, but it'll be a touchdown. But I can walk through any of the, or answer any questions you want, or, and then you guys know Chris, and he can answer anything from an operations standpoint. He's been on-site there for, not 10 years, right? Have you been there?
Four-plus.
Four-and-a-half.
Four-plus.
Yeah, 2014.
And so he knows the facility, and again, he's been the most amazing addition to, you know, without him, I don't think we would have curated it as well as we did. And he was great about telling us, you know, who comes and the market that we could hit, and the sophistication of the market down here. And we've seen it too on other days, so we're very excited to be here.
Does the real problem is he lacks enthusiasm.
I love all our projects.
I remember that from the last time you were in.
And that's still my favorite design place, but this one is really spectacular.
Anybody have questions?
Just a quick question. So the floor plan that you showed, that was the second floor?
That's the third floor.
The second floor is just now 500 square feet of food and beverage storage.
Yep.
And the second floor was 300-plus seats plus the kitchen? That's all gone.
And you said the bottom floor remains the same?
Remains the same.
Right.
And can you still get from that first floor area to the third floor now that--
Yeah, via elevators. We have elevators throughout the building.
So the circle staircase is gone.
It's gone.
Staircase is gone.
Where was that on that, is that kind of the end of the bar?
No, it's right in the middle where that seating in front of the bar, it's all right there. And it was like 25-foot radius there, it was a huge space. And you got great views of the stadium here. It's a very exciting project.
With the bottom floor, is, will you be managing that as well?
Yeah, we'll be managing all of it.
Yes, all food and beverage operations on the first floor. There'll be some multipurpose stuff Patriot Place does in there, but all food and beverage operations will be out of the restaurant.
And the bottom floor typically is just not all the time open?
Yeah, so we've had a comedy club there for the last three years. Some game day operations we'll have in there, some private hospitality, mostly private hospitality.
Yeah, not day-to-day à la carte, mostly private parties and the comedy, so.
When do you hope to be finished?
The end of the week.
Oh, really?
We're very close. And we've really been pushing, but, you know, with the holiday coming up, that creates a little bit of a hiring crisis and training crisis, because a lot of people are away and they already have plans. So we'll be open in the next two weeks. And we're shooting for kind of a big party on the 13th--
16th.
16th, the Monday night. So that's our kind of final goal, but it's very close.
Do you see, is there a transition from, you know, obviously from day to evening dinner, and then evening dinner to bar? Is the food served throughout?
Yeah, food served right till 10 o'clock.
Okay.
We'll examine whether we can go later there. You know, we, sometimes we start at 11:00, then we end up back at 10:00. Sometimes we start at 10:00, you end up at 11:00, but if there's a market there, we would serve later on the food side.
On the food side, okay. And I don't recall, was CBS Scene one of the establishments that either volunteered or required to do the automatic card reader? Was that not CBS Scene?
They, they had a card reader, they were not, they didn't volunteer, but they do have, they did have card readers.
Okay, and that will make, that will continue on?
If the card readers that you have--
We have the newest generation ones in Boston, and they're amazing. I don't think we can run a facility, especially during game days, without one. He can speak to that, but they're pretty amazing now. And they take a lot of the, you know, the human error out of it, even though we think we have great people, so we like them.
We'll be utilizing them. They're $5,000 pieces of equipment, they're amazing. We upgrade them monthly on software, and we'll be doing extensive ID checking, training, for whoever's gonna be working the door. And we'll probably start with our experienced staff and other venues to train other people. We'll be doing extensive training session just on ID checking and working the line and the door management of the facility.
Thank you. That's, there's some establishments that push back and do not want to do that for their reasons, but I just couldn't remember if CBS Scene did that, and I appreciate you continuing to do that.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? For public hearing, anybody in the audience? Maybe you wanna close the public hearing?
Sure, so move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion of closing it? All is in favor?
All right. Move to approve the alteration of premises and management agreement of an all alcohol beverages restaurant license for CBS Scene Patriot Place LLC DBA CBS Sporting Club located at 200 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna just hit the selectmen's update, just so we can try to get it onto the schedule. The other thing I had was just wanna shout out to Bobby Flag for running that great event on Saturday. Be a buddy, not a bully softball game between the police and the fire. Fire win?
Fire.
That was, it was a good turnout. I was able to pop down there real quick, but really appreciate Bobby Flag doing that and pulling the whole town together. Anybody else have any public update type stuff?
No, I went to that too, and the event kind of built momentum through the day. It seemed like people heard about it and kind of more people got out there, so it was a great message, having kids, you know, seeing kids whether be a buddy, not a bully.
Yeah.
Keep the momentum going.
Yeah. All right. 7:25, is anybody here from Hughes Entertainment? Okay. Yeah, you wanna read that out?
Sure. Move to approve the automatic amusement license for Hughes Entertainment, Inc.
You gotta open the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Let me get that out. All right, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 177A in the Code of Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 71, Amusements and Local License Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 26th, 2018, beginning at 7:25 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, on the application submitted by Hughes Entertainment, Inc., DBA Laser Craze slash Extreme Craze, for approval of a license to operate automatic amusement devices at the premises located at 30 Commercial Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You say your name.
Yep, my name is Craig Hughes. I own a company called Laser Craze. Hughes Entertainment DBA Laser Craze. We're rebranding to a name, Extreme Craze.
You wanna just tell us about the whole establishment?
Yeah, so we have, we run family fun centers with Laser Tag being the main attraction. We have a location in North Annover, Westboro, Massachusetts, and Woburn, Massachusetts. They're about 20,000 square feet each, with about 7,500 square feet dedicated to Laser Tag, big party and event area, inflatable bounce houses, and roughly 25 amusement games, and then a pizza cafe. And about 50% of our business is birthday parties for kids between the ages of seven and 13 years old. We also host numerous groups, camp groups, church groups, school groups, or just folks that come by to play with their family and friends.
Is this a franchise, the Extreme Craze?
No, it's not, no.
And where's it gonna be?
In the Ocean State Joblot Plaza is what I know it as.
Bradley's Plaza, for those of us that--
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Been there for a while.
But is it, could it be in that back right-hand corner?
Well, it's gonna be at Alma.
Sheik to sheik.
Well, that's really going back.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna have 20,000 square feet?
Just about, yes.
So use of that whole former space?
Yes.
Is it the biggest location?
No, the Westboro location's about 22,000 square feet. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And I was checking out the reviews for that, which were overwhelmingly positive for the most part. Compliments on the staff--
Yes, yeah, thank you.
It can be hard to control that, each group of kids.
Yes, yeah, we work real hard at it. It's what we're kind of known for. Real good customer service, yeah.
On the hours, is Monday just so you guys can have a day off?
Pretty much, yes.
A typical slow day in that--
Yes, yeah, Monday's kind of a slow day and gives us a break, and we do maintenance and things on Mondays.
Yep, and then it looks like school vacations and stuff like that, you'd be open?
Yes.
I did have a question on the hours.
Mm-hmm.
It just has Sunday opening at 10:00 AM, I thought, from what I read, not Saturday?
Oh, you know what, it's supposed to be Saturday, too.
Okay.
I may have misstated that.
So it says weekdays, and then, well, then it just concludes Sunday. So, okay, so Saturday would be, Saturday and Sunday would open at 10:00?
Yes.
And then the other weekdays would open at noon?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yep.
Anybody have--
Yeah, so in the packet, there was the ZBA special permit, information that we got. You went through that process, you personally?
Yes, I did, me personally, yes.
Any concerns that were raised and overcome by the abutters or the neighbors or the traffic patterns or anything?
No concerns, no. We had a couple people that were there to support it.
Yep.
Other business, you know, businesses in that plaza there, very much a proponent of the idea.
Yep. Yeah, so everything I've seen is very positive on it, so I just had to ask if there was something we were missing that--
Great, yeah, nope, not one negative word said about it.
Thank you.
The redesign of that parking lot, just so you know, was a little bit new too, so, you know, I don't know that everyone's necessarily used to that new one-way area in front of there, so it can get a little busy, especially with kids going in and out.
Okay.
Sure, just a technical point for you to consider tonight, is that the 20-day period--
It actually ends tomorrow.
Yes.
All right, so any approval of the board should be consistent with that, so that there is, so that they don't, you know, one stop before the other. So I would say that, you know, if you put a date of approval, if you were so inclined to do that, would not do until, say, Thursday, Thursday as opposed to Wednesday. Just a technical point.
Now, on the, the, I don't wanna use the wrong word, but the stipulations that the ZBA put on you, you find that limiting the amount of arcade games and all that?
Yes, aye.
Any of those? Okay. How many arcade games typically in one of your other establishments would you have?
23 to 25.
Okay. All right, so it's--
It works.
Right in line?
Yes, yep.
When do you anticipate being up and running?
Well, we would hope to be by the end of the year. You know, ideally.
All right, anybody else? Doc, you have anything? This is a public hearing, anybody from the audience have anything? Seeing none, maybe you wanna close it?
Yeah, I'm just moving to approve the Cessis, or do I need to put--
We have to close the public hearing first and then--
Oh, sorry. All right, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? None, all is in favor? So I would probably make a motion to, if we want to approve it, to have it approved effective Thursday?
I would say that's probably, that would be safe to do.
Any appeals?
I would just say 20 days from the receipt from the town clerk? Because there's nothing on here with a date from the town clerk, right? Because the ZBA--
Yeah, I think, I think it actually concludes tomorrow. The 20-day period concludes tomorrow, basically, we confirmed that earlier.
So the date of Thursday, okay. That would be June 28th. Okay, so move to approve the automatic amusement license for Hughes Entertainment DBA Laser Craze slash Extreme Craze, effective Thursday, June 28th.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you very much, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Everyone's here from the Ponset Reservoir. Yeah, they're all here.
Alright, we're gonna go with ahead of schedule, so the 7:40, Ponset Reservoir in our RC Inc. Doc tells me everybody's here, so.
The game's all here.
Just make sure you guys speak into the microphones, state your name and all that.
Rich is a member of the committee too. He's not a voting member, but he's a member. As is Mark.
I don't vote.
You don't vote.
You guys are here to give us an update, huh?
Yes, I'm Rick Lewis, I'm the treasurer of the committee. Our president couldn't be here, she's traveling. And we have three board members with me and then also Rich Collemi, who sits on the committee as a representative from the Conservation Commission. So, we also just met with the Conservation Commission last night and I got, I actually will give you an update on two things, and one very briefly, and the other one will lead into that, if I can pass this out this way, if I can have reference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we, we met with Conservation, this is just a map of the reservoir, just for reference purposes, and it just shows the weed treatment program that we have proposed for this year that was approved by Conservation last night, pending some paperwork that we've got to get done. Why I tagged that along is just showing other activities that we're involved with regarding the reservoir, and this is for weed control for invasive species of plant life that come into the reservoir and we're treating for those. The other area that we're involved in right now is we're working with Conservation also for up on Edwards Road, which would be in the northeast cove on the map, the northeast most cove area, for a stormwater retention basin and also a parking lot for people who launch boats over there. So it'd get the vehicles off the road and in the areas there. We just submitted that this last week and that'll be coming up for public hearing in July. So that's another thing that's happening. The primary reason we came in was that the Schneider Electric and their consultant, Woodrow Kern, submitted this document a couple weeks ago, came out June 13th, and it is a, let's see, official submittal for final draft document of the, for a permanent solution for the reservoir and the investigation and treatment of heavy metals and other contaminants that went into the reservoir as part of the industrial processes by the Foxborough Company back in the eighties. So this is the culmination of a five-year study that they just completed and as I think I mentioned, it was a month and a half ago or so when I was in, that this was pending and that this was coming up for being, it was being reviewed by the DEP and this has been reviewed and now they're going to be, they've submitted it for public comment and there's going to be a public presentation on the, the report, July 18th, I believe it is.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, sorry. At the Ponset Street facility, I believe is where it's going to be held for Schneider Electric. So we believe there's a number of things that have been glossed over in this that are not accurately being represented in the report, and we're going to be having our consultant review it for technical completeness, and we'll report back to you on how that's going. But I think our appeal is that this is, the bottom line for this report is that they're saying, we're done. We're not going to spend a dime more studying or doing anything about the heavy metals that are in the reservoir. So the, to be very fair about it, the water quality of the reservoir has improved dramatically. The water clarity, the water quality, the amount of metals in the water, excuse me, has greatly been reduced over the last five years. And that's just been a function of weed growth and weeds probably tying up more of the metals. A lot of the metals used to get put into suspension and into solution with storm events that came through because there were areas that weeds or nothing could grow because of the contamination in there. Now, with the weed cover and the, you know, the, I shouldn't call them weeds, plant cover, it's much more controlled, the water clarity's a lot better, and the water quality has cleaned up. So that is a huge win for the town, for them, for everybody. The downside is that the metals are going to be there and are still there, you know, they'll be there forever. And some of the discrepancies in the report is that one of the studies they did was taking cores and trying to age-date the core as to how much sediment accumulation has occurred since the D80s, and they've estimated between seven and 10 inches of sediment accumulation has occurred in that time period over the last 30 years. However, and I don't know if you can really see that from this distance, but that top bar right there where the high points in the graph are, are where the highest cadmium levels still are, and that's zero to six inches. So even though they're saying that sediment has been building up, most, majority of the contamination is still in that top six inches. So there's that, there's other points of, they make a big statement out of that there's been no cadmium detected in groundwater. That's not true either. Both their monitoring wells and the town wells have had up to four parts per billion of cadmium in them for the first few years of the study. Since two years into the study, maybe year three, cadmium levels started coming down and have dropped, so that's a very good thing, very good news. But it's just, the four parts per billion is below drinking water standards, but it's not that it's not there. It's so, you know, they've make a little bit over, overstatements of their, of their results. So there's, there's a number of issues we have with this. I think the biggest issue we've got to decide, or you guys have got to decide about what to do with this is, this is mostly town property and there will always be metals over a substantial amount of the reservoir, and that's not going to change and it's not going anyplace. Metals, even though they've reported in the early report would biodegrade, metals do not biodegrade, they will just sit there and, and be there for a long period of time. We, we sent a letter into the DEP and as you guys suggested, and we put them on notice that we have, part of our charter as the NRC was to look at doing trenching or dredging of channels in the reservoir to improve drainage in the reservoir. And, you know, we do have funding to do that, and we have not gotten quotes and we've not started the permitting process for that, but it still is on our agenda to do that. And one of the things they did to not address that is they just said, no future operations or no future use will be considered in this report. So what comes of that material that we dredge or how it's dredged or who's responsible for disposal of the dredged material and anything about that is not addressed by this report, even though we put them on notice. So, I mean, we're, we're really interested in working with them and trying to find a workable solution to all this. The worst of the worst of this material is really in Gunjun Brook Cove, which is like maybe 20, 30 acres of the entire 300-acre reservoir, and that's where the bulk of the contamination is. But, you know, their, their approach has not been to take out the worst of the contamination, it's been to take out nothing. So, that's, unless I missed anything, that's kind of our.
Good job.
Synopsis of this.
What would dredging do, I mean, like you said, the metals are the metals and they're going to stay there, so what would dredging do again, and would it be in that cove area?
The dredging we envisioned would be in several coves, but one of them would be in Gunjun Brook Cove, and it would be to deepen it so that it would improve water flow through the reservoir and that would help for nutrients and also by dredging and deepening, it would improve, we're, we're having to spend $40,000 to $60,000 a year on weed treatments in the reservoir, and the only way to change that is to deepen parts of the reservoir to get at some of the areas, and Gunjun Brook Cove is one of the worst that has been treated and been retreated almost every other year for weeds.
Who pays for that weed treatment?
The NRC does, through funding that we were given by the town. It actually came from Invensus, I guess, backing through that.
No, where's that worst lake, the worst contaminated cove, where is that located?
The, if you look at the map I gave you, that's part of the reason I gave the map, so, it's in the south, the, the bottom left corner of the map.
This kind of purple part here?
Uh, yeah, where the purple, we're gonna have a weed treatment program down there this year, but that cove is where the bulk of the contamination is. And why I say bulk, I mean, there's levels in the soil there that are not just slightly over contamination levels, they're thousands of times over what would be considered acceptable levels. There's other areas of the lake that have low-level contamination that is just slightly above, but that first 20 acre or so area, 20, 30 acre area in that cove has got just huge, huge numbers.
That's the cove where the, the contamination came through the little creek, the little brook and into the lake there. So it's heaviest there and then it, it gets a little bit lighter as it branches out.
But the, that whole, on the map, that whole left side is town property and the town property extends out, you know, is reservoir, the Blueberry Island, that's all town property. Town is the largest property owner on the, on the reservoir, is part of the reservoir. And, you know, we really feel the, the time is now to probably get legal advice as to what, if anything, can be done to push them to either, you know, accept this or to move forward to try to have them do something about it. The DEP appears to be very satisfied with doing nothing.
So the funds that you have set aside that were given to you through this process, so you've got consultants that will go out and do the weed control and the cleaning, and you guys are all volunteers, do you have, when you said you're gonna do a, I guess for no, for lack of words, rebut this report, do you have an LSP, a licensed site professional on contract to review this?
Yes.
So that scope, is they're going to review the original report and then the findings by the DEP and then rebut that with a formal report? Any more testing needed to do that, or do you plan on using the testing that Woodrow and Kern did?
We'll be just using the testing that Woodrow and Kern did. We did testing six years ago, we did testing prior to this report that, because it had gone almost 20 years since sediment samples had been taken at the time, and we took core samples just to sort of document that the problem had not gone away and, and that it was still a big issue. And the sediment samples came back just as high as they had been, you know, 20 years earlier. And the results of their own testing, several years after that, reconfirmed that, that the highest contamination still is in Gunjun Brook or the, that cove and less than as they go out, and the highest concentrations are in the top six inches.
So, so to look at the schedule, it's advertised, there's going to be informational sessions, and then they close the public review and comment period on September 4th. Are you looking to wrap up your report and rebuttal by September 4th? It seems like you would have to do that.
Yes.
So within two months?
Yes.
And are you responding back with, with an attorney, or is it just an LSP?
Right now, we're just anticipating using an LSP to look at the technical issues associated with this.
Keep in mind, a large part of this is the town's property. This board is, is really doing a service for the town.
Yeah, and that's, in my experience, it's.
Decision or town concern.
Yeah. But that's why I'm, it's a two-step process, it's the, the engineering, the technical part, but administered somehow through a vehicle through council to be more effective. I guess that's, that's why I'm asking if this council involved.
The LSP had advised us that there would be an extensive risk analysis that would have been done as part of this document, reevaluating all the really, all the risk issues associated with this, and it's, it's really not here. It's, it's really absent in this report. This, this report is, I'll call it a skim coat. But, and I think they have good data, like I said, the, the water quality is definitely a huge win both for the town and for them, but it's just how satisfied are we that leaving this all behind is, is the right thing to do for the town and for the, you know, use of the reservoir going forward?
Can I also add that the, the funds that were given were in response to a notice of responsibility for the phosphates that came in with the heavy metals. This is a report on the heavy metals with the determination that they should do nothing and leave them there and they're not going to be a bother, and we as a town will own those metals. And so the funds that we're using are for the lake, but they were designated for the phosphates and the mitigation of the weeds and, or the lovely plants and, and, and so, and so that we can keep the, the lake usable. But this leaves them with no, no, I would say responsibility for the heavy metals, they're heavy, they're not going anywhere, we will own them forever. And they're toxic.
Yeah, and you should keep in mind that the two parties that are doing this, the two parties are responsible for it. The, the state gave Foxborough permission to dump the, the metals in there originally, and now the two of them are doing the evaluation as to whether it's okay to walk away from it. If they do, we just don't know what's going to happen in the future, we're, you know, we're on the hook for everything, the town. And, you know, if it's determined at some point that we, we should, or some disturbance happens, it's all in the town, if we should have to clear all that, that cove.
Mr. Chairman?
And there's two issues, two, and certainly the board can correct me if I'm wrong, but there've been other public hearings in the past and they've pretty much ignored any comments that, that the committee has made in the past, and that's been a very frustrating process for the committee over the last 20, 30 years. And also, you know, worst-case scenario, if we have a little bit of a drought and that water level goes down, you know, some of that sediment now becomes.
Airborne.
Airborne, and now we are dealing with, you know, hazardous material that's not covered by two feet of water anymore. And that could happen, historically, we have droughts every once in a while.
We're going through one now.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just a question to the committee, is, is it case where they do not want to disturb the sediment because it'll stay mixed into the water for a prolonged period of time and then right now the water conditions are actually quite good, so as a result, by, by dredging it, it would create this mixture into the water that would probably stay for quite a while if, if it was disturbed that way? probably stay for quite a while if, if it was disturbed that way?
Um, if, there's different types of dredging. Um, if they came in and said they were going to do like clamshell dredging, the sort of the classic, you know, big scoops and stuff, yes, that would be a real problem. But most of these types of problems today are handled by hydraulic dredging, uh, where they're sucking, um, out like a big vacuum cleaner off the bottom and then processing that water and sediment and separating them and treating the water and putting it back in. And also they put up silk curtains around the area that they're actually dredging. So literally you can't see any suspended material outside the dredge curtain. So there's, there's a lot of sites, um, Hudson River, I mean, there's, and many in Massachusetts that are going through the process of dredging and, and being cleaned up, um, you know, for this very same purpose, uh, whether it's mercury contamination or cadmium or chromium or whatever. But there's, there's lots of them going on out there.
The technology exists.
Thank you.
Has the committee, um, had any discussions with Schneider directly?
No.
I think, you know, from, from reading this, I think Schneider's, I'm not speaking for Schneider, but, um, I think it's the open-endedness that concerns them more than anything else. Um, but if, you know, maybe there's a discussion, you know, to, to provide some ongoing funding for the committee to, to continue operations with a, a finite date, um, you know, might be palatable to them. But I, I think, I think just having something open-ended probably scares them a little bit.
Many of these types of sites, at least what I would consider, I, I'm a hydrogeologist and I did pollution abatement programs for forty years of my career. Um, and one of the more typical things that is put on the table is what I consider source control. And you'd go into an area and remove the sediments that are the worst of the worst. And quite often, you know, a small, maybe ten or twenty acre area might represent seventy to ninety percent of the total mass of metals that are actually in the reservoir. And, uh, but you're right, it, it does start getting scary when you start thinking about having to dredge a hundred acres or a hundred, does it become a hundred and fifty acres? And that is kind of against to be an open-ended, you know, how big a checkbook do you have and when do you stop spending? Uh, but if you, um, you know, made a commitment for a more limited and finite thing and you knew what you were achieving and you knew you weren't going to get it all, but you knew what you would achieve by taking that out and that, that would be a good thing. Um, you know, um, that would be, I think, a reasonable compromise without having the risk factor.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the dredging costs, we've gotten quotes for dredging and dredging is not expensive. Uh, it's the disposal cost.
Disposal.
It's the treatment of the water because the water will have cadmium in it and then it's the, the getting rid of the sediments, uh, because the sediments will be loaded with cadmium. So that's where the real cost comes in.
Has anybody ever roached Schneider with, you know, seeing if they were willing to do that?
We, in the last, before this came out and we were commenting on the previous area, uh, we proposed to them that, um, um, a reasonable pilot program, we called it a pilot program, uh, would be to address that cove. Because in their original documentation, um, their consultant and LSP, Woodren Kern, they're really not lake people. They're not dredging company. They're not, they're good LSPs and good consultants, but they don't do this kind of business. And they had a lot of, um, what they kept on referring to as uncertainties. Um, they didn't know how many stumps they'd have to remove. They didn't know how much sediment they'd have to do. They didn't know, you know, they didn't know this, they didn't know that. They, they had not done enough study or evaluation, so they put a lot of contingencies on it and made it so that, uh, there were so many uncertainties, they felt like it wasn't worth spending the hundred and ten million dollars that they estimated to go forward with it. Uh, because you couldn't be a hundred percent certain that there would be no problem afterwards, you know, that you wouldn't get to a hundred and ten and find out you had to spend a hundred and sixty. My own opinion is that they may have been having to spend a third of that, but anyhow. But if, if you don't, if you don't know what you don't know, you're going to put caution, you know, comes first. And that's, that, I mean, that's the right thing for them to do.
I, I think that would be an interesting discussion because if you read through the report, and this is probably going back to one of the early phases, they're drawing a conclusion here that's saying the benefit doesn't outweigh the cost and the risk, but they don't say what the pilot is or what the dredging or what, what the cost in risk is, is equated to.
Right.
So it's probably, and I remember the early reports, they were talking about doing it in the winter and doing it in different things, but in this summary, it doesn't talk about the cost. It doesn't talk about what the program is, it's just saying the cost is too high.
Right, right. And their, like I said, their, their estimate was a hundred and ten million to do, it was like two-thirds of the reservoir. They said, it went from a very small problem to all of a sudden, when they got to the design stage, it became a very big problem.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And just, it's separate, but kind of the same. If you're looking at going in front of the Conservation Commission to do off-street parking to bring more people in there, isn't that counterintuitive? Because you're going to be bringing boating and people stirring up the sediment where really what you wanted to do is let it sit. Is that the left arm and the right?
The boat dock is there. What they're really doing is improving the site and improving the, uh, the water flow back into the...
Yeah, the, the first goal was to actually capture the street runoff that goes in right now directly into the reservoir. Um, we, we did a survey fifteen, eighteen years ago of, um, the loading that was coming in from various streams and, and things around the reservoir. And, and Gunjun Brook is number one in way of loading of nutrients and so forth, but and, and street runoff. Second one is Napata Street, or not Napata, um, Edwards Road.
Edwards, yeah.
And, um, um, there's both wetland drainage that comes across underneath the, the street and then there's also the street drains that come straight in. And so since that was conservation land right there, it was an easy, um, to say, hey, we could carve out an area here for a retention basin, capture that, let it filter through the sediments before it enters the reservoir to control that. It happens to co-locate with where people are, you know, uh, carrying in canoes, kayaks, boats, you know, backing up pickup trucks and everything else in there. Um, so it, we thought the neighborhood would like to see those vehicles off the street and, um, not have the erosion from the vehicles going back and forth down there. So we may be increasing it some, but we're also trying to improve the water quality that's coming in.
Thank you.
What we have in mind for the boat access is for smaller boats. This is not going to be backing up a twenty footer. We can't imagine that that's going to be, I guess, where there's a will, there's a way, but we don't anticipate it based on the size that we're designing.
The cove also is only a couple of feet deep right there, so you're not going to be able to put anything big in.
How much money is in the, um, the fund?
We were, uh, given two point five million dollars.
For phosphorus.
For the weed, uh, you know, for nutrient control and weed control programs, yes.
So if we, we went the lawyer route, then that would be on the town's legal budget and it wouldn't come out of this budget?
Our charter really is not to, to go down that route. I mean, we're supposed, our, our charter is for weed control and, and, I mean, it does include the, you know, betterment of the reservoir for, you know, long-term use and things like that. It's, it gets kind of gray zone as to, you know, where...
Yeah, and I'd just throw it out there because, I mean, we, it is the, a good chunk of town property, so...
It is. I think I used this analogy before. I mean, it's really, it's, uh, it's like somebody buried something in your backyard and said, oh, you know, you know, as long as you don't dig anything up or plant a garden or eat anything out of your garden, you know, uh, this stuff's going to sit back there and just be fine, but, you know, uh, it's still there.
Didn't at one point someone say that, uh, you can fish all you want, just don't eat it?
Yes.
Yes.
The fish are one of the highest concentrations of cadmium, is it, in the fish?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it bioaccumulates as it, you know, goes from the, you know, plankton and everything else right up through.
So there's added liability there if people are fishing and eating the fish. So they shouldn't...
It was interesting, the, we brought that up to the state and they said, well, there's a ban on eating fish in general in the, in the state because of mercury and airborne mercury that got into, you know, water everywhere. So you're only supposed to have a very small or limited consumption of fish in your diet anyhow. And because we were like, well, you know, these are, these are pretty high levels, you know, should we do something? It's, oh, they got mercury anyhow, so it doesn't matter.
We were curious if we should have signs posted saying, please, don't eat the fish. And they said, nah, it's fine.
The, the state has been so low-key about, I mean, there's just been, I mean, we've sent in letters and, uh, you know, our comment letters before, uh, earlier, on earlier documents have not even been addressed. Uh, even when we found math errors, they didn't even correct them. So we feel like the state is really, um, you know, uh, wants to see this go away just as bad as the company does.
So this is just, you guys coming before us, giving us an update, right? July nineteenth, is it at the cafeteria at the Napata Street?
Yes.
The Foxborough with the Schneider...
Yes.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, thanks for all your hard work.
Well, one more, one comment. Is there anything you need us to do right now?
I'd say, you know, having somebody review, it looks like you've been reading up on some of the, what's in this document stuff and, and, you know, come to that meeting and, um, you know, um, I think a decision has to be made as to how the town feels about having this, you know, left the way it is. There's, there's their regulatory obligations, but then there's their community obligation as to what they're, what they're doing and what they're leaving behind. So, um, just see how you feel about that and decide, um, you know, it, it may be something legal to do with it. I, you know, the legal thing usually is, you know, our, whose responsibility is it down the road? That's what you're probably going to end up asking for legal advice, but really it's as a community, you know, how do we feel about a, um, large industry feeling that they can just, you know, dump and walk? Um, and, you know, who's going to be there, you know, twenty, thirty years from now and what's going to happen then? So it's just, it's, it shifts uncertainty onto the town that maybe shouldn't be there. So...
And we do need to get some conclusion here. It's for both sides. I mean, Schneider can't walk away from it because then they're going to dump it on us, the town. I mean, so it's, some sort of resolution has to come to what's a reasonable solution to this whole thing. Right now, if this goes through, they will, the two bodies, again, responsible, walk away from it and it's on Foxborough.
There is an order of responsibility, um, so I don't know that that disappears, if...
It doesn't. The, the order of responsibility for the contamination, they know where it came from, so as long as anybody knows where it came from, they will always be responsible for it. Now getting them to pay for doing something about it may be totally impossible. I mean, they, they could actually file a lawsuit against us for doing dredging because we might be disturbing what they put there. So if, if we decided that the, one of the best things for the town would be to deepen the reservoir so that we could, you know, increase, you know, recreational activity and get that stuff out of there, they could file suit against us to stop us. So, because this will have been a closed case. And closed case means you don't do anything with it.
And again, we're looking at this as an opportunity. If you just go on their website and just look at water, they partner with businesses to, for the safety of the community. So we see it as, as an opportunity to partner with them to build a success story. We said this the last time we came and we still see it that way. So...
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, next up, eight ten, Saga Hibachi Steakhouse Extension of Hours. State your name.
My name is X, I, first name X I N G, listening at I A. We, we want to require for a se- se- less man approve us to, to, uh, early Sunday, Sunday, uh, ten A M day. Ten A M we prove for provide to our customers, you know.
So you're going to do like a brunch type of thing at ten A M?
No, for a game day, for a, for Sunday.
Oh, just on game days?
Yeah, right.
But you will be serving food?
We usually do Sunday eleven. Because the game day sometime they got, you know, the early, we are, so, open ten, you know, ten thirty, you know. We want a Sunday pro- provide to for our, we, for customers, you know.
So just on, on football Sundays?
Yeah, right.
If you open at ten, will you have full food? Going at ten o'clock so that we get food?
Yeah, right.
Do you have a special menu that you're going to provide for that day or is it just your normal menu for that day, sir?
We, we have a game day menu too, you know.
You do?
Yes, uh, special for a game day menu.
Does it include a breakfast or is it just strictly, strictly lunch?
To the Sunday we do all day, you know, dinner. We don't do lunch in Sunday.
I see.
Just through the chair, reading the cover letter and reading the advertisement, it, it's not clear that it's just for game days, it's for all Sundays.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if it's a, um, miscommunication or if, if we, he's saying one thing, but what's in the application is another thing? What, what I'm saying is, um, you're saying it's just for game days, only when the Patriots are home?
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
But the application is, states every Sunday?
Yeah, right. Just all for this year for a, for a Sunday, you know. So we, we have few, uh, you know, papers they send, uh, send, send to, send to you already.
So do, do you want it for every Sunday or do you want it just for?
Game day.
Game days?
Just only for a game day, you know.
Okay.
That was, that was two, or last year you don't need it, you know, for, just, you sign a paper, we send it in, you know, day. So after you send the letter, you know, so...
Okay. So it seems, it seems to be a mismatch.
Yeah.
We have to clarify that.
Well, we have time to get this fixed and right. So we can't approve it tonight because the application says every Sunday and you're telling us something different. So we have until September to figure this out. So I would recommend maybe coming back and, and, and working with town manager to, to get the application the right way and then come back before us.
We can, we can rectify that for you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. You'll have to come in and meet with Pam in our office and she'll, she'll help you with that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So we'll reach out to you, um, this week and try and set up the time to do that. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So because it's so different, it's probably best to close this and take no action and then re-advertise for the different application?
I think that's accurate. I, uh, because it's a different type of application.
Do we have to vote no action?
We just take, take, the vote, just take no action.
Okay.
So move to take no action.
Well, we're going to close the hearing.
There was a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Not required for this.
I don't know if we even have to do anything, do we? If it wasn't a public hearing?
No, there's no public hearing, but, but you could take the vote to take no action on this, uh, application.
All right.
And you directed them back to us to re, to re...
All right, so move to take no action, um, on the extension of hours for Saga Hibachi Steakhouse for Sundays at ten A M.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? I think none. All in favor of taking no action? action?
Right.
All right. Next up, informational update, new map and parcel numbering systems for all real estate property in Foxborough. Good evening, sir.
Hi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So this is a fairly innocuous topic and if we've done our jobs correctly, nobody should notice. But since it is such a significant change to how real properties identify in the town, it's appropriate to raise it here. So what we've done is, in the assessor's office, is we've established a new map and parcel identification structure effective immediately. So what's map and parcel? If anybody looks at the property description on their tax bill, they'll see up high here, see property description and then they'll see a number below it. The number used to be three segments and now it's five. And so it's, although a seemingly small change, it's a big change for those who actually use the number. Most taxpayers aren't going to use this number, but many do. Mortgage escrow companies, when they send the tax payments along to the town, they are linking the payments to this number. So all the mortgage escrow companies have been notified about this change, have been given the file in advance, old to new, and they've been testing and don't have problems. Every department who issues a permit in the town that has to do with property is using this number as well. So administration office, the board of health, inspections department, they'll be used, they use the map and parcel number. And so it's the key linking number amongst many of the systems within the town. So as you can imagine, if we change this number, if we don't do it in an organized and coordinated way, it wouldn't turn out so good. But we've done that. We've actually been working on this project of changing the numbers for just coming up on two years. Simple concept as this is, it's actually complicated to implement because of all of the different systems that it touches, including outside providers like mortgage escrow companies that rely on this number and our online payment provider. So why have we changed it? It's, quite frankly, it's been a jumble. It's been a numbering system that's been in existence for 50 to 60 years. It's a common numbering schema. It's used, you know, across the country. I believe one of our, one of our older or former members of the board of assessors, Bill Buckley, Sr., I believe he was actually involved with the implementation of Foxborough's first map and parcel numbering system. And it was a great idea for the time. It was progressive, believe it or not, at the time. Have a numbering system for all the property in town. And we've got 6,541 pieces of property in town. But as time marches on and parcels of property split or are merged, the numbers have become a little bit of a jumble and has created some frustration for some taxpayers and for the assessor's office to keep everything straight and organized. So the new best practice is this five-segment numbering schema rather than three. And quite simply, you know, the segments are as follows. The first segment is the map. What map within the town of Foxborough is your property on? And the town of Foxborough has 183 maps. So if you take the map of Foxborough, it's divided into 183 pieces in the assessor's office. So the first segment is the map. The second segment is the parcel number, you know, what is the number that's assigned specifically to your parcel. The third item is a sublot. If there's a sublot within this particular parcel, it's identified. Fourth parcel is the building. If there's a building on the parcel, that's identified. And then the fifth segment is the unit. So you can imagine with only having three segments previously to jam those last three items into that third segment, it could get kind of messy as we do have several properties in town that do have sublots and buildings and units. So this is a much more logical numbering schema. It will allow and accommodate for more organized splits and merges going forward as there's a structure to it. There's a notice that went out in everybody's tax bills. They're Q1, Q2 preliminary tax bills that went out this week. If you haven't received them, you'll be receiving them soon. So it's a pretty short, simple message explaining, you know, this fact, but to draw everybody's attention to it. Again, the overwhelming majority of people will have no need for this parcel information. But again, because it's so critical in terms of how we operate within the town and with banking institutions and online payments, it's something that people should be aware of that actually changed. Other than that, it's done. It does not affect anybody's information at the registry of deeds. So property is not recorded at the registry of deeds as map and parcel, it's book and page. So obviously, we can't mess with that. That's registry of deeds. So nobody has to worry about anything having to be refiled and recorded. If anybody does escrow their taxes, and that's about 40% of the taxpayers in the town, if you want to be on the safe side, you could contact your bank and let them know that your parcel number has changed, but chances are we've already beat you to it. As all of the, most of the escrow banks, banks at escrow consolidate them to escrow companies. And there's two primary ones. And they already have our new files and have tested them out. But if you want to be on the safe side, you could do that. Also, in case anybody was interested, we do have an old to new 83-page index that's on the website, the old map and parcel, new map and parcel. Go to the assessor's webpage and you'll find it there. And over the next couple of days, I think we'll raise it up to news and announcements on the front page as well, given that people will be getting their tax bills and that's when people will probably start taking any interest, if they're going to take any interest at all. So again, just a simple informational update that we've changed this system for the better and happy to take any questions.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Don't.
One question. When you started implementing this a couple of years ago, the second segment there where it represents the lot, that is not the house number, it's just whatever the lot number is?
Second segment is the parcel number. Like, so if you're looking at a, say, map one, and let's say there are 50 parcels on that map, you know, there may be 356, 357, 358, 359. It's just the identifier for the parcel itself, but not the unit that's on it. You know, if it's a single residence, something like that, there will be no, there 'd be no unit. But if you have condos or duplexes or things like that, you know, those would have gotten, those identifiers would have been crammed into the third segment. But now we've got segments three, four, and five to parse those out more cleanly.
Mr. Chairman, just want to say that a lot of time and effort went into this process. This was not an easy project to complete. And it actually could completed with, I'm sure, a lot of great hairs, but not a lot of disruption. And so I appreciate the fact that a lot of people put a lot of time into this and the staff did a lot of it internally. So I appreciate all the effort that went into that.
Thank you. I really want to thank the chief assessor, Hannah, her staff, Debbie and Kelly and Lisa on the revenue office. There was a lot of tight coordination there. And then Ryan from DPW, the GAS specialist, you know, he played a critical role in this as well. One of the things that he did for us that is now in the system, if anybody goes into our systems and looks up their parcel, they will find the location ID, which is basically the GPS spatial identifier. It is actually the most precise identifier you can have on the planet because there's only one per space on the planet. So that's now actually in our systems and Ryan and the DPW folks do use that identifier for their DPW work when they're mapping things out. So now we actually have that in the system as well, along with every property, which we didn't have before. So I want to give special thanks to Ryan for putting in all the effort to do that. And there's a fair amount of cleanup to make that happen. And all those people I mentioned are the ones responsible for all that.
I think what's important to point out is that this is also an important step towards the automation efforts that are going on in a lot of our operations these days. And that's, this is an important piece there because everything now is linked back to this new numbering system, which will be much more accurate along with the GPS coordinates that are tied into each parcel now. So that's a, it's a big step forward to us. Even though it may not seem so significant in terms of how it's laid out for you here, it's actually an important step forward for us in our automation efforts.
To just expand upon that briefly and be my last point, is that in going through this process and looking at all the systems in the town that actually use this information, when we looked at one of the permitting systems that the town has, Acela, which is used by administration and the board of health. And so we were looking at those systems thinking, okay, we need to upgrade those as well. As you probably know, we do have this other new permitting system that the inspections office uses and fire called Viewpoint. It is the, you know, new best-of-breed system. So in looking at updating those systems with the new identifiers, we learned that Acela is really at end of life and was purchased by a company, used to be GeoTMS, purchased by a company that is not investing a dime in it and is pretty much dying on the vine. So the health director and executive secretary in administration, you know, have already determined that they will be migrating from Acela to Viewpoint. And they're actually excited to do that, knowing the functionality that they have. So we've already, we've given them all the information that they need to be able to pull that off. I think we actually have a meeting on Thursday to discuss that even further. But, so yes, it's leading to some end-of-life change out of one of the town's long-used permitting systems.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
All right. Discussion of regional dispatch in Semerick. Get kind of like an up-to-date where we are and then we can address some of Mr. Parker's.
Sure. So, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what's happening now is that we are planning to do a regional update for all the various four towns, the four towns that are participating in the process right now. We, the board tried to solicit dates, what would be best for the four towns this morning. We preliminarily came up with the dates of July 26th and August 1st as options. They're both Wednesday nights. So we think we'll end up being in Mansfield for the, similar to where we were the first time when we met to first go over this process and had all four towns together. We thought that it would be best if we updated everybody together like we did the first time. So that anybody had, anybody who had questions, they could all ask them again at the same time. Or if there were follow-ups, we could certainly do follow-ups with that. The difference this time around is that we actually have an executive director on board who's been with us now for six months. So, so he's been doing a great job of getting us prepped and ready for the next phases of the process, which we hope to roll out Semerick operationally by July 1 of 2019, which is about a year from now. So we're working on all those phases. And one thing that has gotten a little bit of attention lately was the actual location of the site. And the board has been contemplating, the Semerick board has been contemplating a couple of sites. One was the original Mansfield Police Station site, which was offered from the town of Mansfield as a location initially. It was later learned and discovered that this location in Foxborough up at High Rock Hill was one that made good sense to explore because of the very nature of the building and its location. The location is such that it's actually one of the highest points in all of Foxborough and actually the four-town region, and has perfect line sight in terms of, you know, in terms of accessibility to all four towns and beyond, actually and well into the Boston area. So this is an area that we explored. The committee engaged the services of Castle Booze, the engineering architectural firm, to evaluate the site. They came back and at the board's meeting two weeks ago, they actually, Rob made a presentation to the board and gave the results of that evaluation, which actually was a comparison between both sites, the police station site in Mansfield as well as this one. The findings of the report indicate that it is actually very workable to use that site and location. It ultimately became the preferred site of the board and the board has selected it as preferred site now as opposed to the Mansfield Police Station site. So they will, we will present that information to everybody on the 26th and identify all the reasons why it was selected as the preferred location. And we'll also talk about our transition plans because that's important for everybody to know that and how that will work. But all in all, the process is moving on quite well. I've been working very closely with the board of directors, along with the various chiefs and lieutenants and deputies, deputy fire chiefs from all four towns. And we've had a good relationship working on how to go to get to the next step and next phases of where this process is going. Rob has done, I think, a terrific job in six months to try and bring the process together. He's been housed right here in Town Hall temporarily until his new facility is ready. And we don't know the exact timetable of that yet. We're still working on that piece of it, but our goal is to have that up and running by next year sometime. We don't know the exact date at this point. So we may have to actually have some temporary location for, during the cutover phase. Those are things to be determined. So I, I'll offer that as information, but again, this is a general discussion for the board. I know that Mr. Parker has raised several questions in the past. And so this is an opportunity to put this on your agenda and talk about it openly. We're here to answer any questions or have any response that the board has.
Come up and ask some questions?
Back again. I want to thank you guys for finally putting it on the agenda.
People at home.
Richard Parker, 79 West Street. I want to thank you for finally putting it on the agenda. I know I've come up to Citizens Input three or four times. You've just had to listen. And on that note, I want to make it perfectly clear that neither my wife nor myself feel that this is a game, as Mr. Keegan stated at the end of the meeting, at last meeting. I took very offense to that. And there are other actions that are probably going to happen for that. But as you know, I've been trying to obtain a copy of that feasibility study that I keep bringing up for three years. No one has a copy of it. So I'm assuming it doesn't exist. Mr. Keegan has said in a meeting that he'd give me a copy. Mansfield Chief Sellen, in a public meeting, selectmen's meeting here in Foxborough, said that he'd give me a copy. And no one provided me with a copy. So I went the route that I thought I should by filling out Freedom of Information requests from all the towns. No one's been able to provide me with a copy of that feasibility study. So I guess my question is, does it actually exist? If so, where is it? How would I get a copy of it? And if it doesn't exist, what information did the board of selectmen use to move forward with regional dispatch to make sure that it was in the best interest of the town of Foxborough and its residents?
Does that exist?
It does exist. We've actually given it to him, given it to Mr. Parker. So probably, Rob, would you want to address that issue? Because it's, he's been working very closely and he has the best explanation of how this has worked.
Good evening. Rob Verdon, executive director, Southeast Massillon District. So the question of the feasibility study has been asked since I've gotten on board. And some of the miscommunication from Mr. Parker, I could certainly take the blame for. One of my first meetings here, within, I think, two weeks of me coming on board, I attended a selectmen's meeting here. And I was asked, the topic was raised, the feasibility study. And I provided Mr. Parker with what I thought the feasibility study he was looking for was at that meeting that night. And then I reported to Mr. Keegan that that had been provided to him. So if there was a breakdown in communication in that part, I apologize. It's important to note with the feasibility study that it is not as clear and cut and dry as there's a single document that covers feasibility of the entire program. Originally, that was the, my understanding is that that was the intent of the feasibility study that was commissioned originally. Unfortunately, the company that was hired to conduct that study went out of business mid-study and did not complete the study. In lieu of that, the information collected, there's a tremendous amount of information collected. It just wasn't formatted into a report. That information was combined and gone through by the feasibility committee. And the operations portion of the study was completed locally by the public safety experts from the four towns. They felt that they were not qualified or they had time issues and other, they were not technically the best people to conduct other portions of the study, which involved the building, which was a study that was provided to Mr. Parker by Castle Booze and Associates of the Mansfield site. And then the other aspect was the regional technology and communications portion. So, the, the study was complete. The study operationally was complete, and then two other studies were complete to encompass the entire feasibility of this project. So, those three reports are, those three studies together are the feasibility study for the district, which was presented at a joint selectmen's meeting, from my understanding. And I would say that the operation portion of that, the report, was the presentation. That was what the police and fire chiefs that were on that committee put together and reviewed and determined the feasibility of the, the project. So, there is not one document that we could provide. We have provided every document that we have to Mr. Parker, so has the state. So, I hope that answers your question. I hope that answers the board question.
What are the three pieces? So, the location?
So, the building, the, the actual, the original building, and we've, we've conducted a similar scope assessment of the High Rock facility. But, so the building itself, so what the, will the, the facility fit in there appropriately? Is it, is the building sound? A to Z on engineering for the actual facility.
I'm sorry, just, is, is that, are we, so we're clear, that building in Mansfield or the one in Foxborough?
Both had a similar study conducted.
Okay, so Castle Booze did one of each?
Correct.
And the original one from Mansfield was done prior?
Was Mansfield, right.
And then the one that Castle Booze recently done was presented, was it last week?
Yeah, a couple weeks ago.
To that committee, okay. So, there's two separate reports?
Correct. And then we, myself, I compared both against a, Nina's standard, Nina's the regulatory, not the regulatory, I'm, the standards agency for 911's National Emergency Number Association, and they have a standard and a, it's called PSEP, Public Safety Answering Point Site Location. It's a qualification grid that weighs characteristics of facilities, so you can compare and contrast different facilities.
So, you compared Castle Booze's two studies and combined them into one?
Correct. It's a few-page report.
And that was presented last week to your committee?
Yes.
So, now there's three reports, right?
Correct.
Okay.
For the facility.
Yep.
I received that today. The, the one for High Rock as well as the chart shows the two.
And before we even commissioned the study for High Rock, we did, I, I conducted that study with what we knew about the facility before we invested money into actually investigating High Rock. So, that, there's, there's actually a fourth report that shows that report with question marks where we didn't know and what we were hoping the study would answer. And even before the, the actual engineering study was completed, High Rock showed, it was highly, it showed, it indicated that it had a high potential for being highly advantageous for this type of project. That's why we moved forward. So, those three documents combined, I would say, is the feasibility study for this project. Again, those were commissioned, except for the High Rock site-specific engineering study. Those were about two or three, three years ago.
What was the date of the original ones where the company?
I had to double-check.
2013?
2015. The original.
The second one. We had three. 2010 was the first.
Chief, why don't you come up to the mic?
The first study that never actually took ground was in 2010, when Andy, Andy Gallo was the town manager. That was with the town of Foxborough, Rantham, Norfolk, and Plainville. We, we went through the whole process of seeing if everybody was interested in doing it, and then it didn't really take ground, and then a few months later, it took ground with Rantham, Plainville, and Norfolk, and leaving us out. So, in 2013, we did our first one with Walpole, Norwood, Medfield, Medfield in Foxborough. That one went through the whole full study, and then it got hung up with how much it was going to cost each town. And then this one took off in 2015-ish.
Because the draft, the draft study says June of 2015.
That was the draft study.
Right.
And that company that originally did that went bankrupt?
And I provided that, we do have a draft report from that company, which I provided to Mr. Parker. It does have a tremendous amount of information. It's just, it was never finalized because the company was never.
Right. So, there was no question about the information in the study? So, the information that Mr. Parker has is the same information we all had. There was no question about the information that was provided. The, the company itself just went, went bankrupt.
Yeah.
So, they, so they never actually final, they never finalized the, they never finalized the, the final report.
So, is the, is that part of the study, the same study that was in the video of the two-year study? Is that the same study?
I can't speak to that.
I believe it was. That was the one that was discussed, I mean, the one that was presented back in 2017.
Seventeen, in, in January.
I think there was.
It said there was a two-year study?
It was based on the 15 study, correct.
So, that's the, that's the same as the other study?
I believe so.
That, that's the one that was presented in Mansfield?
Mansfield, right.
For all the selectmen, and it was a PowerPoint?
Right, exactly.
Okay. As far as savings, it was said in one of the presentations that Foxborough would save.
I'm sorry, do you mind through the chair? So, are you now comfortable with the information?
If that's all the information there is, I have to be comfortable, I guess. If that's all the information there is. It just doesn't seem, when I, when I originally asked for it, and everybody told me they'd give it to me, no one gave it to me. So, then I had to proceed to go through the Freedom of Information. State 911 only gave me the plans for the Mansfield building and said that that was all they had. So, if, if, if a study was done, why wouldn't State 911, that gave the town of Mansfield $100,000 for the study, why wouldn't State 911 have all the information that is supposedly available?
And that, Mr. Chairman, that might be just, the way that study was approached due to the unique nature of the company going out of business mid-study or towards the end of the study, I think lends itself to confusion. It's not a traditional way of compiling feasibility studies of that nature. Normally, one company goes, cradle of the grave on a feasibility study. In this aspect, there was money invested, data collected, and then the company went out of business. And the committee at the time, from what I understand, felt it was in the best interest of the communities to proceed with the information they've, they've gathered, plus adding the two technical studies on top of it, which they didn't feel comfortable doing themselves. That might have lent, it's, the State 911 Department, the Castle Booze study does say feasibility study on the front of it, and they might have had the same confusion I had. I could tell you that the State 911 Grant Fund and the grant funding, they are extremely particular about the way funds are dispersed and reimbursed. If you don't have your ducks in a row, you don't get the money. The money's not spent. It just, it doesn't happen. If you don't comply with the guidelines 110%, they don't disperse or reimburse funds. So, I, I could tell you with absolute certainty that if any money was spent and it was, came out of the State 911 Grant Fund, that it was 100% compliance, because otherwise...
Was there money spent and did we get reimbursed from that?
Correct, there was. And Mr. Parker was provided with the documents that show the, the money that was requested, how it was spent, the, the whole reimbursement process. You can see all the handwritten notes on it. The State 911 Department requires goods and services delivered before they disperse a reimbursed fund. So, you can't even do it anticipation of, it has to be in hand, so.
And you requested the document from the State 911 and they?
That is correct. I, I got the, I got the building plans for Mansfield and the quarterly reports that basically said the, the, the project is moving along fine. Didn't really go into much detail. And also, it showed where the money went, but most of it just went to professional services. It didn't break it down to say where professional, you know, $70,000 for professional services is pretty wide open as to where it went.
So, the, the documents that were provided to Mr. Parker specifically say which vendor, and I think the reimbursement request even says for, I can read it to you. Procurement of services related to radio study for, and that was the request from the, the committee to the state. And then, these are the, the proof of payments and the, the check.
Check, please, yes.
Initial rec study activities, including development of survey project, coordination, kickoff meeting. So, every request, you can't just put a request in for professional services and expect the state to give you reimbursement back. You can try. They'll, they'll come back and say your, your request is denied. For these reasons, we need this information. And they'll coordinate that. But they, they do not disperse or reimburse monies unless they are 100% sure that the money was spent in accordance with the, the guidelines, and they have proof of delivery, deliverables. I can't speak to why the state didn't provide or doesn't have it. I have provided those documents to you, though, so.
Well, while, while, while Rob's up here, I just, I just had a, it kind of goes off course, but while he's here. It said in the video that a 12-hour shift was, I quote, "the most efficient way to run the regional dispatch center." I take "most efficient" as to mean the cheapest way. So, I guess my, my question is, do you know if it's going to be 12-hour shifts?
My intentions at this point are 12-hour shifts, and efficiency lends itself more to, in several aspects. It's not just money. 12-hour shifts afford the employee double the amount of time off, scheduled time off, reduces our shift changeover times. Every time you change a shift, that's a time where you have doubly employees on duty and a tenth of production. So, to reduce our actual shift turnovers, offer the employees more time off, incentivize, it offers a better vacation program, lends itself to employee health. So, efficiency lends itself, it is more financially efficient as well. It does help us control overtime and reduce the amount of personnel to do the, the same amount of work, but it's more efficient for the employees as well.
Because, because the way, you know, most of our shifts are eight hours, so 12-hour shifts are the option selected. It's 12 hours is a long time. You're in a very stressful condition and situations. Is that in the best interest of the employees that are working? And is, is in the best interest in the residents of the towns? 12 hours is a long time, stress. You get toward the end. Is that, you know, I, I just think that that's a long time to sit in a very stressful environment.
Subject matter experts.
City of Nashua, as you all know, that's where I come from. We've always run 12-hour shifts in the dispatch. I was there for 23 years full-time, 28 years altogether. Our dispatchers always worked 12-hour shifts. That was a problem.
And I've worked as a dispatcher earlier in my career. I've worked both eight-hour shifts and 12-hour shifts. 12-hour shifts afford you, instead of coming to work five days a week, you come to work four days a week, and then you get four days off. So, it allows a, a better recuperation time to kind of refresh and come back to, to do your, to do your job and serve the citizens. I did offer to the employees, I hosted a current employee information session for the, the dispatchers that are currently employed in the four towns. And I, I made the commitment that we're, this is the, the way we're looking. If it doesn't work out, we're not, it's not set in stone. We will certainly do what's best for both the employees and the town. So, our intention right now is 12-hour shifts, and that appears to be the, the best way forward.
Moving on to some financial things. It was said during the presentation that Foxborough would save $93,000 per year. If you take out the $51,000 for regional dispatch apportionment for 2019, which is the cost that the grant doesn't cover, you end up with $42,000. So, my, my question is, what is the estimate total for the cost the grants will not cover once that regional dispatch is fully operational? Because right now, it's $51,000 per town for 2019, and we have Mr. Verdon, and it goes for the things that the grant doesn't cover. So, what's the estimate that the grants won't cover?
Do you have that one?
So, the district assessed 50, approximately $51,000 for 2019. That's, that's costs that are not covered under the development grant for essentially the startup period of the district. That's for legal services, insurance, for stuff that's not covered under the grant, office supplies, and just normal operational costs. I can't, I can't project out what, because we don't have our next year's grant award in hand yet. Hopefully, within the next year, we'll be operational, so we, we would just start our normal assessment routine, which would include non-grant reimbursable funds, just like the town pays now. But I couldn't project that out right now.
I mean, I guess my concern is if $51,000 now, it's not operational, $42,000, I think we'd get chewed up pretty quick. That's all you save. So, you're going to be in the hole already, which, which leads to another whole topic about...
Do you have anything on the other aspect of it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, those estimates, we worked up together with all of the four different towns and the folks that actually operate the facilities to understand their, their cost and expense structure. And so, the, the number that's being referenced here is, once the facility is up and fully functional and is running, it was a conservative estimate, and I still believe it's a conservative estimate, that we would save something on an operational basis, something less than, you know, $100,000, 90-some-odd, whatever was referenced. But we already have, I think, some new indications already about some changes that will, will be considered in the rollout that should probably turn that number into a multiple of what that estimate is, which is only an estimate. You know, one is, is what's being heard in terms of the, you know, the perpetual grant funds that the town, the dispatch will be entitled to is going to apparently significantly more than what we had estimated. In addition to that, in Foxborough's case, we're still going to maintain, as is every other town, at our, the Foxborough Public Safety Building, a walk-up window 24/7. And so, our assumptions at the time were the most expensive model to, to staff that. But, the, the chiefs, you know, I've, I've been participant in discussions that they've had, and they've already come up with some ideas that are going to economize on that without, without leaving any of those shifts on staff. So, I'm still highly confident that, that that number on the operating basis, you know, will be achieved and then some, once fully operational. These are startup costs. But then there's the capital cost as well. So, every, every one of the four towns is at end-of-life with their communications equipment, and that's approximately $1 million for each town to do that. So, that's $1 million of new gear that each of the towns won't have to, won't have to fund as the E911 grant will be doing that. So, so the savings are, are significant in addition to the, the operational efficiencies.
So, just to, to highlight on the perpetual grant aspect, right now, the, the town, each individual town that's not combined with another town is eligible for what's called the support grant. Right now, each town gets approximately $50,000 annually. That goes to offset cost of personnel cost. They can buy some equipment for the services 911. It's another State 911-funded and administered program. We take that $50,000 per community, it's $200,000. And once we become a regional emergency communication center, we turn that into approximately $900,000. So, this is a significant increase in our grant, annual grant income, and that's perpetual. That's built into General Law Chapter 6A. As a regional emergency communication center, we're eligible for 2% of the total surcharge money from the last year. And then they adjust it based on the, the state's programs and how they're progressing. So, the regional emergency communication centers are highly incentivized to, to regionalize, and part, the, part of the way the state does that is by increasing the, the grant funding to the regional centers exponentially. The other, the other thing is that you can't compare the operations of the town of Foxborough right now to the operations that you'll see in the REC, the Regional Emergency Communication Center. Right now, all four towns, they're starting to feel the changes that have happened over the past 25 to 50 years. Cell phones, the, the way 911 calls are inputted, the demand for intelligence and, and data from the field. Right now, town of Foxborough is incapable of taking wireless calls direct. So, if you call 911 on your cell phone, it's going to a wireless center and then questioned, and then transferred to the town of Foxborough. The Regional Emergency Communication Center will be taking those calls directly. Will have the staff and the depth of staff to be able to handle those. With those calls, it comes a tremendous exposure to surge. So, if somebody passes a car accident and 30 people call 911, there's no goalkeeper anymore. So, it's, those are not practical to undertake in a, in a local center like the four towns. So, if you compare the, the level of service provided at the Regional Emergency Communication Center to an equivalent at a town level, you're looking at increasing your staff locally by one to two people per shift, which you can expand out to be very expensive. So, if we compare those to, apples to apples that way, there's a significant cost savings plus a tremendous return on investment with quality of service.
I think it's also important to point out, too, that the, the High Rock site also presents revenue opportunities for, for the, for the REC, which we didn't have to, didn't have the ability to consider with, with the Mansfield site. The other tower that's part The tower that's part of the property will also force an opportunity to actually rent space that will actually go back to the region itself as a revenue opportunity. And not only that, but the space itself in the building is more than we actually need to actually run the facility, so, which means that the state could use that as a training facility, or we could expand it to include a couple more communities if we needed to. So that, those, again, additional revenue opportunities that could help offset the cost of running that center.
And the High Rock facility, not to go completely down the rabbit hole, the High Rock facility has the opportunity to be a much more efficient building, a much greener facility, to reduce our dependency on commercial utilities, decreasing our cost annually, which we would not have the opportunity to do in Mansfield at the 50 West Street facility.
My next issue was back, I don't know, a few months ago, the board had talked about they didn't want regional dispatch to go down the lines of the DPW, where when the water department and the highway department and everything converged into a Department of Public Works, they didn't know if they saved any money. The board asked, "Did you save money?" They said, "That was the right idea to do, but we don't know if we saved any money." So they wanted to make sure that regional dispatch stayed separate from central dispatch. Yet, at the town meeting, it was put on an article to take $51,000, the apportionment for regional dispatch, and take that money and put it into central dispatch. So you're combining the two instead of keeping them separate. So why wouldn't you have a separate category for regional dispatch if you want to actually be able to keep track of what money you're saving, or how much more you're spending?
Ready?
We actually are segregating those funds. That appropriation is a separate, separate count, separate count structure. It falls under dispatch, so there was no need to create a new department, you know, number for it, because within a short period of time, the central dispatch department will be, as far as Foxborough is concerned, from an appropriation funding standpoint, will be the regional dispatch department, it's the same. But during our transition, those funds are indeed separated. They have to be, and tracked separately.
I guess my concern is 10 years from now, when, you know, you guys are all gone, and no one remembers when regional dispatch started, are we saving money? You're not going to know, because it's still going to be called Central Dispatch. There's not going to be any line change. Right now, it's in the budget of Central Dispatch. 10 years from now, it'll be in the budget of Central Dispatch. No one's going to know that, or no one's going to remember that in July of 2019 is when you went to regional dispatch. So how are you going to keep track?
That's, that's what I do with most things like this, most analysis, you know, are we saving money, are we losing money, what's the best option? I mean, that's, you know, that's where, you know, I pull the information together. Either way, though, you know, my expectation is that you will still see, inflation aside, you'll still see a flattening of the central dispatch number if you look over a span of, if you go out 10 years from now, the last 10 years to the next 10 years, I think you'll see a flattening of that number.
Just like any budgeting process, I mean, you see what prior five, 10 years goes and so we'll be able to track it.
I guess another question, under the departments on the town website, SEMREC is listed as a town department. I was under the impression that SEMREC was a separate entity. If so, why is it listed under town departments?
I can probably answer that one.
Okay.
When we, when the board of SEMREC decided that it was time to recruit for an executive director, we needed to purchase applicant tracking software at the same time for the town of Foxborough. So in order to take advantage of being able to recruit for software we've already purchased, we created SEMREC as a department. So it's the same as when we recruit for a DPW position or a police position. So SEMREC was listed as a department for that reason.
For recruitment process only.
For the recruitment process only.
So it's not, it's...
It's not a town department, but I had, we had to categorize it because the software only works within the towns. We can't have two different, we couldn't even advertise a school position because it has its own website. So we had to put it as a department for recruitment of Rob's position and, you know...
So that'll go away?
It will go, it will go away with the advent of the new website that's coming.
Well, and that was my thing, I'd already, I talked to Rob about that the other night. You have the SEMREC website, but it doesn't have a link to the SEMREC website. You have it on your department, as a department and town, but it doesn't have a link to the SEMREC website.
So is the SEMREC website up and running?
Yes.
We can disable the link now on our website?
I'm certain you could do that. Amanda, Amanda has that magic.
Yeah.
I guess another financial question. Town manager Keegan, assistant town manager Bernard, and finance director Randy Scollins appear to spend a great amount of time on SEMREC-related duties. What amount of time is being spent on these duties? And what's the indirect cost to the town associated with the SEMREC duties? Randy seems to be doing all the financial stuff, Mary Beth seems to do all the hiring and all the insurance things. When I go to the boards, that's all they talk about. How much time is being spent on these things that the town of Foxborough is paying for because it's their time, and it's not being reimbursed by the other towns?
So I could, I could say that I handle the finances. I do seek counsel of subject matter experts in all four towns, including Mr. Bernard, Mr. Scollins, Mr. Keegan. This is a startup, and I think the collaboration between the four towns lends itself to the efficiency of the district. But I'm on board, and I do most of that, the majority of it, with counsel from the subject matter experts. And in turn, I do provide, and I have provided a tremendous amount of services back to the town in kind, technical advice, and my personal time that I've given back to the town, supporting different operations and incidents. So I think if we, if we truly calculated how much the district, with my position supporting the town, to save the town, I think we're approaching $100,000 just in the six months I've been here, which I think would far exceed any, any time I've...
And the way I look at it, we as a town pay those three to look at ways to save money down the road, and I'm sure the other towns have the same amount of time invested in it.
Another concern I had that I brought up at the last meeting was, on March 14th, at the advisory committee meeting, town finance director Randy Scollins detailed the regional 911 facility to be located in Foxborough. I'm just wondering how Randy knew it would be in Foxborough when the SEMREC board of directors did not say Foxborough was a preferred site, not even the official site until three months later.
You can, yeah, if you want to...
I was just going to say...
Yeah. Why don't you come up to the table?
Mr. Chairman, nobody knew at that point in time where the facility was going to be located. At best, I would have speculated that this is where it may be located. Nobody knew with any sense of...
Well, it's in minutes to the advisory committee meeting.
Must be true.
I don't have a copy with me, but I do have a copy of it. So that's why I was pointing out about that.
If I misspoke, I apologize. If anything, I would have said something like, you know, it's under consideration.
Okay. Now for Rob. The study for the High Rock Road building says that the building and site cost will be $5.8 million. How much of this money is guaranteed from the state? And it says that this $5.8 million does not include radio, technology, and communications costs, as well as other costs outlined in other reports. How much more than the $5.8 million will it take to complete the project? Also, does the $5.8 million include the cost of acquiring the land, the building, and the tower?
So to answer your last question first, the $5.8 million does not include the cost to procure the facility, the land, and the tower. If we move that in that direction, which we've entered into negotiations with American Tower to do so, I could tell you, though, that that is well below and well within my operational budget. I could probably pay it out of pocket at this point right now. As far as the $5.8 million...
That's an important point, because that's been banted about as being a big cost item. It's not. It is a very small, small amount of money, one that I could actually give you the dollars in my, in my hand.
At one time, that amount will be made public?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not the time in the process.
Not the time, not the time to do it.
No, no, I understand that.
In negotiating, not going anywhere.
Right.
That's right.
Nope. As far as the $5.8 million, that the state has committed to the project, this project, they have been very good about seeing projects through to the end. They don't say, "We guarantee you $5.8 million over this amount of time." It's a competitive grant, which you go into annually, and they weigh the progress of the project and some other factors, and they provide monies as they see fit. There's $15 million available this year. We're hopeful for a pretty good chunk of that. There's several other projects across the Commonwealth that are competing for the money. We have started talks with the state about a different method of securing those funds moving forward to give us a better understanding of our timeline, but as of today, nothing has been finalized. And that is, Castle Booze is a engineering firm, they're an architectural firm. They, they don't have the subject matter expertise to speak to radios and IT equipment and those things. So those will be additional to the facility, but are eligible expenses under the grant. So that's a different process. We've estimated how much it is, and it's, it's not a small amount of money, but it's not, it's not duplicate, doubling the amount.
Okay. And I know you touched on this at the SEMREC meeting, but I'm just curious, you said that there would not be a full environmental impact study, even though it's in a very sensitive area in the middle of the state forest?
I didn't say there wouldn't be. I said we haven't, there's been no, we haven't crossed the threshold at this point. We don't anticipate crossing a threshold at this point to require an environmental impact study. We have done some environmental studies as part of the scope of work that was provided. It is contiguous to a state forest. The actual land is private, and it's not designated either way.
Right.
But we are sensitive to the fact that it is contiguous to the state forest. The, I forgot what we were talking about that, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the environment's protected up there. It's a very quiet, nice, peaceful place. I go up there on a regular basis to go hiking.
The latest information from the state is that they're actually welcoming that opportunity, because in this current state, it's actually an attractive nuisance. And what's happened is that the state has constantly found themselves in a position where they have to monitor the area quite closely because of inappropriate activity that could occur up there. This will actually do away with that because it'll be well monitored on a daily basis, 24/7 basis.
And who will be responsible for maintaining the road to get up there? Because it's not, right now, it's not maintained in the winter.
It will be the district's responsibility to deal with it.
It will be the district's responsibility.
It will be.
And if it is chosen, what assurance is it given to make sure the construction project won't impact the state forest, the parking lots, the trails, High Rock Road, as well as access to the people that go up that road and use that area? I know it's private, that little area is private, but to get up there and all that...
So for everyone else's knowledge, the actual facility is at the very end of the High Rock Road, the paved portion of High Rock Road. It's like a driveway to the, that facility. I believe it was built as a driveway to the facility. As far as, what was the second part of your question?
Basically, what guarantees are that the construction project, both the trucks going in and out, all the equipment going in and out to do, tear down a part of the building and all that, and dumpsters, and I'm sure everything else you're going to need to bring in. It's not going to affect people being able to go up there and use that whole area.
Well, as of today, we haven't voted to adopt that building.
Right.
Therefore, we don't own the property. Therefore, we haven't taken any design action. But if we do go forward, we will be extremely sensitive to that. We're not trying, we're trying to approve the facility and the land. We're not trying to detract from it.
It will, it will be a construction site, active construction site for a little while, for a limited timeframe, and then once it's done, it'll be, it'll be probably embedded.
That will be done on the site itself. That won't be done on the state forest property.
It's six acres, I think it can well contain a construction project.
Most of it's all trees.
Yeah, and the construction project really, there's a small, we're contemplating, if we go to that facility, a small demolition project to reduce the size of the facility. There's a small wing that is best served by coming off. The rest of the construction is interior, outfit, and not very much exterior at all. I wouldn't expect heavy trucks, except for that small demo project, if that's the way we go forward.
It's also important to note that the state has been doing some tree trimming itself. It has nothing to do with the activity that the district has with the site at all. We're not related to it at all. Anything that's being done up there now is strictly done by either the state or by, or the current owner.
Yeah.
The trees right now are being done by DCR as a tree thinning project.
Exactly right.
Dead trees and things like that. I already, I already have a copy of that permit, so. Question, will there be a meeting held with all four towns prior to choosing the final site location, so that residents of all four towns will be able to voice their questions and concerns for or against a particular location?
Again, the board has not made a final decision as to, they have indicated that that's the site of preferred site. We would not make a decision. We're going to have a meeting the end of this month. I think we could probably work around that date before we, before we could coordinate it with that date. But we will present to all four towns the site of choice, and it also depends upon how quickly we can resolve the negotiations, which are actively underway right now.
Is that something that all four towns need to vote to?
No. Actually, the district itself would vote on that.
Yeah.
Just the district itself.
And then, just one last quick thing as far as saving money. Of course, you're going to save money. You're taking all your employees that you have now that have been in northeastern Mansfield or Foxborough for a large amount of time. You're making them, getting rid of them, you're making them apply to SEMREC. You are going to be paying them less. You're going to, they're not going to have vacation time, they're not going to have sick time. So of course, you're going to save money through that process. If you, if you have people that you're going to pay less, they're not going to have the time to take off. So I mean, you have to be, you have to save money that way.
It's pretty presumptive to say that. I don't know that we've had any discussions about those items, Richard, so I don't know where you've reached that conclusion.
Yeah.
We've not had any conversation about that.
Well, usually, what happens is you hire a new employee, they start at the bottom.
Okay, that's usually...
Less than someone that's been there for 20 years. You usually don't get the sick time that you have when you leave, if you've been there for 20 years, and you usually don't get the vacation time that you've got when you were there for 20 years.
So, Mr. Parker, you just made a very affirmative statement about our intentions.
Okay.
You've made, you've made a statement about stuff we haven't even approved yet. Our intentions are to be very competitive, more so than the current employees.
Okay.
To offer very competitive vacation and sick time.
I hope it is, but we have, there's been nothing presented to anybody.
I've not reached that point yet.
That's not true. So I, like I said earlier in this meeting, I did present, I opened invitation to any current employee to speak about our intentions, our hiring process, our timelines, and our projected, what we're kind of a ballpark of what our salaries and paid time off schedule's going to look like. You were invited, unfortunately working, so that day, I walked out of that meeting, which is held at the Public Safety Building in Foxborough. I walked into the dispatcher where Mr. Parker was working, and I sat down, and I went through the entire presentation. I think it was nine o'clock at night, explaining the same, rehashed the entire presentation to the three dispatchers that were on duty that night. That spoke to some of the issues. Like I said in that meeting, nothing was set in stone. There was still a lot of things we had to shop for, health insurance, and there was still a lot of unknowns, so it was a lot of ballpark, kind of just a taste of what we're looking to do to keep everyone well informed, especially the current employees. We're not looking to get rid of employees. Unfortunately, though, there is a disparity between the amount of positions available at SEMREC and the amount of positions currently across the four towns. So to ensure fairness for all employees, it's, it's an open, competitive hiring process. My hopes is that I get a bunch of the current employees to come over to SEMREC that compete and apply and get hired, and we retain that employee base. They are new employees, they, there is some things that come with that, that's a completely separate entity from all four towns, but we're, our intentions are to be competitive and treat our employees right. This is, my intention is we have a really nice place to work for these public safety employees who have otherwise have been in this local, you know, two-man shop, so.
The chair, can I also comment on, no, no, I don't, I'm sorry. Under the current collective bargaining agreement, so if, when dispatch ceases to exist in Foxborough, there, we are required to pay out all accrued vacation time. So if you have four weeks on the books, you get paid all of that. Also, if someone qualifies for the retirement provision, they get a portion of their sick leave paid out. So you're not losing your job at zero benefit and then having to reapply at a lower rate, which, as Rob said, hasn't even been determined yet what the competitive salary is going to be. But people will be taken care of with regard to the collective bargaining agreement that exists. They will get vacation payout, and if they qualify for sick leave payout, if they're a... They will get vacation payout, and if they qualify for sick leave payout, if they're ten years or more, they're retired, they're considered retirees. So there will be benefits upon leaving that are granted to every other employee who retires.
Okay. And one, this is it, I promise. Does the town have a policy for town vehicles working out of town? Are they allowed to, not allowed to?
Can work out of town?
Yes.
I've read that policy. I don't think there is. I think it's wear your seatbelt, don't use yourself.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just curious because there was a Foxborough fire pickup truck with a plow this past winter plowing high rock road up in Rantham.
That road is partially in Rantham and they were facilitating inspections during a.
Seventy-five percent of that road is in Rantham. I just found it kind of strange.
It was still in inspection, right?
To see a Foxborough fire department truck up there plowing a road that is in a different town that doesn't even belong to the town, why you wouldn't have the state, if it's a state road, go up there and plow it or the DPW?
There was an inspection being done. I gave approval for it to be plowed, to get up there and do the inspection.
And the inspection was for the wiring, for the, for the, for the, that actually benefited the fire department?
Right.
It just looks strange.
We have an antenna up on that pole and for some reason, we lost it. And when we found out, the power was cut off because the old company didn't know why they were paying for that thing to be powered up. It knocked out the police and fire. Since then, we were able to fix it with national grid, but we had to get up there.
All right. Thanks. It just seemed very strange to see a, I don't know, Foxborough fire department truck.
Good explanation.
That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else, any questions? Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you for your.
Parker, thank you.
Is the, whatever, any other questions?
So moving forward, when all the towns get together in this end of July, beginning of August meeting, it would be nice, in looking back, I mean, it was said that the feasibility report was going to be sent over. Had someone spent ten minutes to try to tell somebody that there was a ten thousand, two thousand and ten, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fifteen, can we get all this in one place so we can look at this?
It is now in one place, right? With respect to all those studies, is that accurate?
From my perspective, when we went to Mansfield, we had the PowerPoint. That was kind of the executive summary of stuff, but having the reports and having something that we can review prior to everyone getting in one place and being presented with another executive.
Oh, with respect to the presentation that will occur the next time, we'll give you, we can give you a half.
Yeah, so I'm asking for two things. The reports that we just talked about, the building reports, feasibility for the buildings plus, the pluses and minuses for the staffing and all that stuff that was used as the basis of the PowerPoint that was presented in Mansfield. Could we get those documents? And then the second thing is, can we get a preview of what's going to be presented so we could review it prior to attending that meeting so we can have some dialogue rather than listening with a lot of information and then leaving and then coming up with questions later?
So I think we have all the information gathered in one place now. Is that accurate, Rob?
It's in my office, not posted on the website.
Yeah.
I think Amanda has it all together, too.
Yeah.
And I have copies of everything else sent out.
Yeah. So we have it all. So I'm not sure why there would be, we'd be going backwards and looking at that information again, but certainly for the, for the presentation for the meeting on the twenty-sixth of the first, we'll get you a copy of the presentation ahead of time. That's easy.
Yeah. I just ask if you're reviewing a unredacted copy of the building studies, that you just be sensitive to the security, sensitive nature of those documents. It's a tremendous amount of security sensitive.
Well, it's not up to me. So if you're talking about putting this information on the town website, you've got to be sensitive to what you put on.
I don't think.
No, no, that's it.
But we're talking about two different things. I'm not asking for anything to be put on the website.
No, no, if I provide, when you're provided with the documents, if they're not the redacted versions, there's some highly sensitive security data in those documents, or I could provide the redacted, it's not really, it doesn't detract from the overarching, all the reports, but trying to.
Yeah. I think you got, there's got to be some clarity because once you give it to us, it's a public record.
Right.
If you give it to us redacted, we don't have that issue, but you've got to figure out why it's.
We're saying two different things. I want to be clear about this. So the reports that have been compiled up to date, like going back to two thousand and ten, I believe, was the first one. That was the, the separate towns and then there was.
I don't know if Rob has all of those.
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think, I've never seen those myself, actually.
The full report was two thousand and thirteen.
Right.
And I'm sure we've got a copy of it somewhere.
But that, but that didn't play in.
We've got a copy of that also, and that, that one fell apart all because of the financial costs.
But that didn't, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't part of the, this process anyways. So.
This is all two thousand and fifteen.
The two thousand and fifteens material you all, you have now. So that's all compiled in one area. So if anybody needs that information, you know, you can reach out to me or to Rob, you know, we're happy to provide it to you.
That's okay. So, so to be clear, the two thousand and fifteen is on, so I don't want to be reaching out to Rob.
Yeah, it's a draft, it's a draft report and all.
I'll do it at this meeting. Can you provide the board with the reports for two thousand and fifteen, whatever the feasibility is that's been going out to Mr. Parker so we can understand where we are moving into this?
Right, it's, that all information is, is there. We have it all, right?
It's distributed in the town manager's office.
So to be clear, can you compile it and get it to us?
Can we get it emailed to us?
That's what I'm asking for. I don't want to be setting up meetings.
It's a little lot of information there. You're talking.
That's probably five hundred pages.
Yeah.
So.
For the.
This is, this is a third or fourth meeting that Mr. Parker's commenting, keeps saying we've given him the information. Up until now, and I'm speaking for myself, it wasn't clear to this board, other than the presentation that we got in Mansfield, which was an executive PowerPoint.
Right.
We've never received that information, so it's a fair question, what were we voting on, what information did we see? We didn't see any of that. We saw a PowerPoint. What I'm asking for is the same information that you used to put together the PowerPoint that everyone got to the same position back last year in Mansfield.
All right, so some of that information was done by staff in terms of the fire and police chiefs, so they helped, they helped compile that information in addition to what was done. There was a draft study that was done, was the basis of the, of the original Semerick entity, and I think Adalbar was part of that originally and they dropped out.
Okay.
So then, so then that document served as the basis for the information that was presented in, in, in two thousand and seventeen. Ultimately, we have, we have that information. It's all, it's all available. I mean, I don't, there's nothing, nothing to hold back.
I think except for the security concerns that Rob has.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So redact what you need to redact, that there's no interest to us and post something that we can get it without having more meetings to ask for it. That's all I'm asking for.
Sure. Anybody else? All right, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, next up, discussion with advisory committee members Bernard Dumont and Stephanie McGowan.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good evening.
How are you?
I have some handouts.
Just some of the stuff that I'm going to reference. A couple of people did, did reach out to me already and I emailed them, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Did you need one? No, I have one. Okay. Okay, I wrote some of this. It's not an official statement, but I will be thrust to admit that I tend to babble sometimes. I figured it'd be better if I was able to just kind of read it, read it first and then any other, any questions or what Bernard would like to add. Stephanie McGowan, Nineteen Roads Lane, sit on the advisory committee. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening. As you know, I came before this board back on April third at Citizens Input regarding an incident at the advisory committee meeting on March twenty-eighth. During your April seventeenth meeting, town manager Bill Keegan read into the record a statement that I was unable to discuss as I was away on vacation, which brings me here tonight. I thought it was best to have a written opinion from the attorney general's office before I came before you. I feel that there are a number of inaccuracies in the statement that Mr. Keegan read into the record. First of all, he mentions advising myself on previous occasions of conflict with school-related expenses or requests for funding, which never happened. I don't recall any, any time where, where Bill advised me on that matter. Secondly, the statement states that our chair, Bernard Dumont, was concerned and looked to them for guidance, which is not true, until the meeting was stopped by Mr. Keegan and Mr. Scollins. In fact, Bernard was fully aware that I might speak that evening and of the conversation that I had had with Frank Spillane, who's the moderator, who had told me I could do so and how I would proceed. So there was no surprise to Bernard. Bernard was well aware that I may speak. And it seems like the statement is basically saying that he was shocked and looked to them to get, for guidance, which is not how it would happen. Mr. Keegan and Scollins keep saying that they advised me. The tape that they speak of in that statement clearly hears them saying, saying that I can't, even though I said to them, if they were wrong, they had taken away my right to speak that night. After that, the town manager still says, you can't. So he was not advising me. He was basically telling us that I was not allowed to speak that night. I also take offense when they use the term allegedly in question my offering of information to obtain my opinion. I am quite sure that Attorney Duca is who I spoke to on the phone originally and got my verbal, emailed a second time to get it written. I'm quite sure that she, as well as myself, take our role seriously, and she was very thorough in asking me details of that evening to come up with her opinion. The third inaccuracy wasn't necessarily in the statement that Bill gave, but there was an inaccuracy the evening that I spoke to you guys at Citizens Input, and I would like to just clarify that. At the time, I stood here and I did tell this board that Mr. Keegan, Mr. Scollins yelled at myself and the chair. I would like to tell you, after listening to the tape, I am quite sure that it was not, that we were being yelled at. I'm not a liar. I would never come before this board and state that. The only explanation that I do have is that there were voices coming from different areas. That's how I perceived it. The chair and myself actually had a conversation the next day where I said to him, oh my God, you know, we were actually apologizing to each other that I may have put him in a situation that he had stopped me when he didn't, wasn't certain that he should stop me. I said, oh my God, and then, and then everybody was yelling and, and he agreed with me. So I, I think it's one of those cases where when children play telephone and, and everyone thinks they hear what's going on and it's, we're completely wrong. A couple of board members phrased it as we were spoken to sternly. Another board member thought voices were over each other and another board member was quoted in the paper saying there was no yelling going at all. So I would just like to make clear, I am confident coming before you tonight that we were not yelled at, but that's how I perceived it that evening. So I want to make sure my inaccuracy is also brought to you, which brings us to the opinion. So both Mr. Keegan and Mr. Scollins were incorrect. Article six and any other CIP request comes from town money and not a particular budget. Matter of fact, when you guys have a chance to read this, Attorney Duca actually said that I could have spoken from my seat as an advisory committee member after filing a twenty-three B form with Frank Spillane. Now, that evening, that was not my intent, and I'm not saying that would be my intent in the future, but I think it's, it should be known that she only, actually said I didn't have to step down from, from my position where you're sitting now. I did not have to accuse myself at all. Her opinion clearly states there is no conflict as myself, my husband, or any other family member has no immediate financial benefit from the capital budget. So moving forward, I would hope her opinion would give some clarity to all boards, committees, managers on the specifics on what creates a conflict. And I just felt it was important for myself, a lot of that statement was addressed to me and inaccuracies that I perceived to you guys that night, and I, I felt the need to come forward and for you guys to hear my side of it. And also Bernard is here as the chair. If you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to answer them. You know, I figured it would be good that we were both here, so it wasn't just my recollection. The chair was also here as well. So I'm going to leave it up to you guys if there's any conversation or questions that you have for us.
I didn't obviously have the time to read what he gave us, so I don't want to comment too much on it, but I appreciate you coming and following us your side of the story.
Yeah, and I also thought it was fair. I was taught to own my words and there's nothing wrong with admitting when you're wrong. And I was really not happy with the statement and that brought me here, but in turn, I felt out of fairness, it was also good for me to let you know that, that I will, you know, I was wrong. It happens, you know, so I didn't want that part here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Bernard Dumont, five, Smith Lane. Complementing what Stephanie mentioned is, as the chair of the advisory committee, it's, I'm sure you already know, one of the key point for me to always keep in mind is the potential conflict of interest. So to Stephanie's point, she did mention to me during the meeting, actually before the meeting, that our town moderator did say that it was okay to speak, but when, actually I did ask her to speak, it was obvious that there was a level of concern being raised. Now, raised quote unquote at that point, because Stephanie was talking, it could have been altered in many ways, but the bottom line is what they were, there was a level of concern being raised. And when the point of conflict of interest was pointed, as very cautious by nature, I said to myself, well, what could be the consequences? So I looked around and I said, well, could there really be a conflict? I'm not an attorney. So to that point, even some of the board, advisory board members, I could tell had question mark into themselves, and both Mr. Scollins and Mr. Keegan provided their feedback. To me, the key point was when they said, and I quoted, that there could be a conflict of interest and it can only be resolved by the State Ethics Commission. At that point, when they even mentioned that our town moderator didn't have jurisdiction on that area, I said to myself, just to be cautious, maybe we should just adjourn that point and stick, look for guidance from the State Ethics Commission because, but it was more as a cautionary measure. And I want to make it clear that at any point in time, those meetings, we are well aware that we preside the meetings. These meetings are the advisory committees and I don't get influenced by anyone. So when I make a call, I make it consciously and in the best interest of the town and your members. So with that said, when that happened, I, I was hoping to hear from the State Ethics Commission what would be the opinion. In terms of resolution, what I would have hoped at the time was what I call always, let's call it, not of the record, but once we would get the opinion from the State Ethics Commission, get together with everyone concerned, meaning Mr. Keegan, Mrs. Scollins, Mr. Cutler from, and the town manager, myself, and Stephanie, understand what was the issue, what was the verdict, and then come back, but unfortunately, it isn't good that route, it is what it is. What I'm trying to say is that, I think that at the end of the day, it all goes back to us being very cautious. Like everything else, unfortunately, it may have been, and as Stephanie mentioned, there were other folks in, in the room who interpreted the reaction differently. But I would say at core of it, we were all trying to protect Stephanie and the town and to avoid an issue of conflict of interest. That's pretty much all. And that's what I have to say.
Anybody on the board? Anybody on the board?
I mean, you know, those issues can be very complicated. It sounds like, like you said, Bernard, you know, everyone's doing their best to look out for everyone's, you know, best interest. You know, maybe the timing of the letter could have possibly waited. You know, I don't know if you guys knew if the opinion was out there, but...
No, I don't think the opinion was sought before the statement was made. And I think the reaction from where Mr. Schoalens and I stood was the statement that was made. I'm glad she got an opinion. I really am, because I think that helps clarify the issue, and I stand by the opinion. I mean, I don't know what question was asked, I have to read through it, but certainly, that's always the best way to do it, and I couldn't take it any better than what Bernard just said. We take a very precautionary approach here, and that is to protect the employee or the board member as well as the town, because there are two concerns there. One is that we never want to see the employee damaged in this process or the board member, but also the town's process doesn't want to get damaged in the process. And I think that's where we get concerned, is that going forward, that we don't want to follow that. So it's cautious, it's conservative, it is admittedly conservative, and we did note in the statement that we're not the experts here, but the appropriate person to go to is the State Ethics Commission, so I give you credit for doing that.
And I would agree with you, but there was, that night, there was no, "We're not sure." That night was, where it's, "You can't."
Well, exactly.
So, no, but my point is, we found out that I could, and the fact that I had talked to Frank first, it just, you know, you know, that's his expertise. He appoints this board. He also is an attorney, but there was, there was no, "Steph, we're not sure." That night, there was no, "We're trying to be cautious." It was, "You can't." Mr. Schoalens told me I shouldn't even be in the room. Now, I will say, the one piece that I will take from her opinion is that in the future, I would, if I could do it differently, I would, as they're speaking, I haven't stepped down from my seat. I've just not, not been part of the conversation. Part of her opinion to say it might be a good idea to step down and sit in the audience while the education budget, which is, which is the, which is the main conflict I have. She does say in here, and I've been advised that we don't do it this way here in Foxborough, but if that education budget was being discussed, technically, the only conflict I would have is the one line item that includes my husband's salary. That it's not the entire budget that is really a conflict for me, but that's not how the budget is presented. So in turn, I, so the whole budget does become a conflict for me because it's given to us as one line and not separated. So, you know, it was just, if that night, if it, and you know, and that may be why I perceived, perceived it different, because I just kept hearing, "You can't." And Mr. Schoalens said, "You shouldn't even be in the room." And then, as I tried to ask, it just, "You can't" kept coming up. So it wasn't, I can now, outside of it, I understand your position. You know, Bill, you and I did have a chance to speak briefly after that evening. It was after I had spoken here, and I know at the time, you know, you did explain to me your concerns, but at that time, you know, you also said to me, "You've left me no choice but to issue a statement."
Right, to correct the record.
So, so we, you know, we lost that maybe where we could have sat down and talked about it before the statement just came out, and, you know, and maybe, you know, and I have no problem with you being able to tell your side as well, but I didn't feel like the statement was completely accurate, and maybe if we had had more discussion at that time, maybe the statement would have, would have been a little more accurate or how I saw it. So I just felt it was, it was good to clear the air, and, you know, a lot of what was in the statement, I asked Bernard if he would come with me, but a lot of the statement was directed at me and my actions. So I just felt the need for it to be, for it to be cleared up, you know? And that my intent also wasn't to accuse you guys. This statement also basically says that I was accusing you guys of silencing me on this issue. I did use the word silence. It was at the very end of my discussion at Citizens Input, and just saying that in the future, I would hope that myself, as well as any, any taxpaying resident, wouldn't be silenced unless we're sure. And I would have had no problem finding out if I had, if I had broken the ethics law, I would have had no problem being told that by State Ethics Committee. So, and I do appreciate, but with that being said, it wasn't, it wasn't gently said that you were, you had my, during the meeting. During the meeting, it was, "You can't. You're, you can't. It's a dual role. You can't." So at that, that night, it was not clear to me what your intent was.
Well, I'm glad that you were able to get here with your statement, get an accurate ruling from...
I appreciate your time. I absolutely do. Thank you for letting me come forward.
Can I just add something? So this is, so this is the third time that we've had it in front of the board. The first time, you presented it, and in fairness, there couldn't have been a response, right? So you set it under Citizens Input, and because of the way it's set up, that was that. The second one, as you had mentioned, I thought from that meeting, both sides were gonna get together, but instead, this board was used as a written statement, and you were away on vacation, and again, we couldn't respond. And that was, it's unfair to the board on both times, right? And that's the way the setup. This third one, I wasn't at the meeting. I did listen to the tape. I asked you for this information. It's clear to me that what was the direction given by town management was an error, okay? The Attorney General said it before. They said it in writing now. Above all of that, town managers come and go, you guys come and go, and even for you to be here, you're not, I know you're not confrontational, and this is uncomfortable for you, we're gonna be here, but if you look at the way that the advisory committee is set up, it is set up with the word autonomous. It's appointed by a town moderator. You're not under our direction, and you're certainly not under finance direction or town administration. So as the chairman, you've got to run the meeting with the intent that you think it's in the best interest of the taxpayer. For town administration to assert themselves is just, granted, there's experience and there's things that they know, but that line has to stay very solid, that you cannot be influenced by any of us, by the finance, by town management, or your board just falls apart, right? The autonomy and outside looking at us and making an informed decision with our input but not our influence has to stay strong. And so I was disappointed that, and when I listened to the tape, there was direction from a town manager and a finance that you guys, and it was intimidating, and I believe, Bill, it was in the best interest of the town from his experience, but you've got to, you've got to keep that line separate from any of us. And so many times, when we have items on there, I want to come in front and influence you, but we don't, and the same thing has to be from town, assistant town manager, town manager, finance director. You guys got to stay autonomous, and that fell apart on this, this time.
Well, I will piggyback on that, where my first two, you know, if I had really known ahead of time that I wanted to possibly discuss Article six, I probably would have gotten the verbal before, ahead of time. My call was to Frank Spillane. He's the moderator. He appoints us. So I thought, matter of fact, not only did he guide me in procedure, but he did give me a great piece of advice, which was, he said, "Sit back and let the conversation take place. Your question may be asked by somebody else, and if it is, then you don't have to ask it." So that's exactly what I did. I hung back. I let all the conversation, all the questions were done, and then that's when I, you know, I raised my hand. And so, and it was a little, not that I thought anybody had malice to stop me, but I, I'm enjoying sitting on the advisory committee. We have a committee that asks a lot of questions, and I've been, you know, told by Frank myself that he likes that we're a committee that's asking the tough questions, because sometimes things just get passed, and I thought I was acting as the best for my committee, and, you know, with that, with a little bit of confusion, I hold some responsibility to the people who I sit on the committee with, too, that they may have been, but you're right, Jim. The word autonomy, you know, is there, and when we're, when we're in session, for us, anybody else there, if they're not sitting up there, is a guest at our meeting. And so I think that's why I was a little taken back, because it wasn't Bernard who stopped me initially. It was, it was the direction of Randy to him, and then Bill to him, and then, and then one of our own committee members, you know, kind of leaned over and said, "Hey, Steph's supposed to be doing this." So that's what stopped the meeting initially, and then I think for me, it just, it did. It kind of fell apart because I thought I was following procedure correctly. And, you know, there's been a couple of things that have come out of this. Bob Hickey wrote an article in The Reporter. Jeff Peterson put an editorial. It's not all directly towards this issue, but it mentions people sitting on committees wanting to step down at town, at town meeting and talk as a citizen. Make up your mind. Are you on a committee, or do you want to be a citizen? Well, if that's the choice that you will give people who, I mean, you guys are elected, but all the other committees, you know, most of us are volunteers, and I'll be honest with you, if you're, if someone is gonna come forward and say, "You've lost your rights as a taxpaying citizen if you decide to sit on this committee," then I won't sit on the committee, because it's my hot-earned money that pays my taxes and is being spent for our budget. So I can only speak for myself that way, but you may have people saying, "Well, then why do I want to do that? If it's gonna, if it's gonna mean that I can't speak." I understand the conflict, and so the conflict is the conflict, but if people are gonna be upset that you stepped down at town meeting to voice your opinion on an article, and, you know, and Bob Hickey, I had a little conversation with Bob on Boundless Day, and, you know, I said, "He's entitled to his opinion, too, but honestly, if that's what you're gonna tell people, that your, your voice does not matter as a citizen, you may not get people that, that want to join these committees, because if you think your, your voice is good there for the town, but you can't speak your, you know, your own mind." So, yeah, I mean, you've kind of hit the nail on the head a little bit with what our committee is supposed to be about, so I appreciate you acknowledging that.
And actually, Mr. DeValise, if I may say, so I had actually the luxury to actually read myself the points from, from the AG's office in Boston. I would say that I would redo it the same way again, because I would really recommend that you read it as well, because there are three sections she refers to, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-three of the law. When I read that, like any typical attorney, she cautions herself so much. I will tell you, I would do it again even after reading this, because not being an attorney, I asked, actually Stefani, right here, I just read it here. There are many points, and I invite you to read it very carefully. Any attorney could basically disagree to many points of a conclusion. So with that said, with all due respect, I'm very cautious to everything I do. In fact, there are many articles that have been discussed, and I've taken strong position on behalf of the committee, but on this one, I still stand firm that after reading the AG's opinion, basically, there are many holes that can be put into those sections, and I invite you to read them, invite you to read them very carefully, because everything Stefani said, even the conclusion, alludes to that, but it's still not very clear to me, given all those sections she precludes with, is that conclusion. So I would invite you to really read that, and maybe we could reconvene about what she said. So, again, with all due respect, as the Chair of the Advisory Committee, I'm very careful, but not because I am, I am afraid. I have taken some strong positions against many way other members wanted me to go on articles. But on this one, after what I read here, and I invite you to read it again, maybe we could reconvene and rethink about what the AG's really state as far as how much to be cautious, especially in Stefani's case, and I could give you some specific example, but I don't want to lose your time. So to restate, as the Chair of the Advisory Committee, I know, in fact, that was the first thing that the town moderator mentioned to me, that we are very independent as a board, and I take this very seriously. On this one, I would still make the same decision with all due respect.
Right. Anybody else feel good? All right. Appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for everything you guys do, too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. All right. All right, we covered Selecton's update. Town Manager update.
Just a couple, a couple things that I wanted to, just a couple things I wanted to bring to the board's attention. First of all, that next week's a holiday week, so we normally work late on Tuesday nights, but there's a lot of things going on in town, like the road race and fireworks and things of that nature. So we're gonna work till four o'clock, but we're gonna work late on Monday night. Work till eight o'clock on Monday night, so, and some employees may decide to take their own time to take that night off, but we will be open for business on Monday night instead of Tuesday night, given the holiday. And of course, we will be closed on Wednesday night.
Can you make sure we get that in The Reporter this week?
Sure. Even though she, she left. The other, other key thing that I wanted to raise tonight was, I just want to make sure I covered both my notes here.
On next week, Thursday, Friday, business as usual at Town?
Yes. Yeah, every, business as usual, other than...
A lot of vacation time.
Yeah, yeah. Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, we'll be open for a normal business hours. Like I said, Monday, Monday will be different, and will be a longer day. Tuesday will be a shorter day. Wednesday will be off. The other thing is the water ban that's been, that's been on. It's actually being, taking place in a lot of towns now, and not just Foxborough. And just in, in what happened is, and why I think some folks have caught a little by surprise, was the fact that we, what was happening was that at four o'clock in the morning, our tank pressure was going down rather substantially, and of course, that's when a lot of the sprinklers come on. It was actually reducing our water pressure to the point where it was, it could have been a public safety issue in some cases. So the right step was taken to shut it down and to make sure that we don't run into an issue. They're gonna continue to play it by ear. If we get water, if we get rain, we're supposed to get some rain on Thursday. Hopefully, that'll help. And this is not a long-term situation. We actually have a long-term solution in the works. That's why some new wells are supposed to come online. It may take another year, maybe two, to have those lines come online, but when they do, we'll have plenty of water to deal with all the issues that go on in town. So relief is on the way. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. And finally, and last but not least, I've always tried to preach in the organizations I've worked in, that, that we build continuity in our organizations, and that we try to come up with succession plans, and also try to promote them within whenever the opportunity presents itself. And when Mary Beth announced the other day that she was going to be departing us at the first of the year, I think it actually presented me an opportunity to actually practice what I preach. And that, therefore, we have within our ranks an employee who has actually been, has received his master's degree in public administration, has also received an MBA, and is also a, and has been a candidate on a couple of occasions to be a town administrator. So with that said, I'm actually contemplating the, I'm actually proposing that I promote Mike Johns to be the next Assistant Town Manager, and I would, and that process would begin, the process would begin sooner or later, so that we would have a smooth transition in the next six months, having the opportunity to learn some of the things where Mary Beth's been working on, have been working in, and training on throughout the year, throughout that six-month period. And then, with the opportunity for Mike to learn, learn the ropes and become an Assistant Town Manager, that's, which is what he aspires to do, and to ultimately become a town manager at some point in his career. So with that said, I am, I'm honored to be in that position to actually promote somebody from the organization that I think has the credentials and the qualifications to actually do that job and do it well. I think has the credentials and the qualifications to actually do that job and do it well. So having said that, I'm hoping that will take place in the next, over the next few months. So I just wanted to advise the board. That's my intention.
Now, Mike's been actively looking and he's been in the short group in a few other towns, so.
Yeah. It's a good opportunity amongst us.
I think it's a great decision to have a candidate in our midst who is fantastic, trusted and proven track record. And I really look forward to working closely with him to transition. We've actually come up with a clear transition plan with deliverables every month as to stuff we're going to download and work on together, so.
Now, we would have to then hire a new Veterans Agent is?
We'll go through that process. I think probably closer towards the end of that transitional process. We'll start that process probably October.
Late fall, yeah.
October, November, in that range.
Is Matt qualified? Is he a veteran?
Matt's not a veteran, so.
He's certainly qualified in all of the paperwork and regulations.
Yeah.
But by name only, by state requirement, we need someone to be a veteran, so.
So no, kind of caught me off guard, but no, I have no, I hold Mike Johns to the highest. No reservations as an Assistant Town Manager with the thirty seconds of information I've had. Obviously, the VSO position. But Mary Beth is wearing two hats. One is a HR and one is an Assistant Town Manager. Is Mike scheduled to wear both hats?
He'll, he'll actually do both. He will do all, and he'll learn the other pieces. He's actually, actually a member of SHRM now.
So Mike is a SHRM member and we share information all the time. Through the Suffolk MPA program, he's taken quite a lot of coursework in HR. I've loaned him a lot of books. We've talked about a lot of projects. So he is, that's what we're, every month, are downloading on HR stuff. He has great instincts, which is what you need. He's a good listener. And he's also decisive when he needs to be. So I think that you can train on the laws and policies and procedures, but you can't, you can't teach instinct and that's what he has, so I think.
I also think too that, that he is, he's, he's one of these guys that picks up things fairly quickly. I think that we also have this, we have a better infrastructure in terms of HR than we had prior to Mary Beth coming here. We have virtually no functions in place. We have, we have an HR assistant now. We also have HR counsel in place to advise us on things that are tricky. So we have that infrastructure already in place now. Much better situation than we had when, prior to Mary Beth coming here. So I think it's a much better scenario for a person to step into. I'll be honest with you, when I set my career off, I had no HR experience either. But, you know, I learned it and I was ultimately an HR director and, and learned it on the fly in some cases. But this is a better situation because you have a person that actually will have hands-on experience during that next six months.
So I don't know if you guys have done this yet or, I know you always say when, when you're going to hire a new person, you look at that role and see if there's a way to streamline it or change it. So A, have you looked at, is, is it, are we doing it the best way? And I would like to kind of see the, the transition plan as well.
Yep, I can forward it. We melted to Bill today.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're looking at, are we doing things the best way, the right way? Is there another way to do it?
I actually just revised the job, my job description because it hadn't been looked at in four years. So I'm in draft form, going to give it to Bill and Mike to both look at, and I'll share it with you as well. We've made some tweaks over the years of some of the, some of the reporting structures were strange when I got here. The animal control officer was supposed to report to me. So it was, because nobody was really in that job, so it was a guess. But we've, we've revised it in presenting a draft to Bill on that.
Yeah, like Jim said, not a lot of time to react, but I've heard, you know, other people have said, you know, why Assistant Town Manager? Why not HR? So that does seem to be a big piece of your role, collective bargaining, you know, all the rules and regulations that go along with it. It's, it's hard to imagine transitioning that without HR experience in six months based on what you've been saying, you've been doing. So, you know, seeing that transition plan and a little bit more background will be helpful.
And just.
But it's not just six months. He's actually been, he's gone through the Suffolk program for the past few years. So he's actually been learning that, that's, he probably hasn't done the hands-on type of experience, but he's actually learned a lot of the pieces of it.
And interestingly, yeah, one of the pieces is understanding benefits and the world of benefits, and that's what he deals with in veterans. So I know he has that piece. Collective bargaining, he sat on the other side of the table as a representative on the Steelworkers A Group. So he understands collective bargaining, but he's going to sit with me. We're hoping to resolve all the contracts before I leave so that for three years, it won't have to be any. We have bargaining coming up this, this month. And he's also going to help me on the Human Services recruitment because that's a really important thing that we've, I think we've established a flawless recruitment process from police chief to library director to planning director to building commissioner, where it's very fair, it's very streamlined. And so I'm going to pass that process along to him and have him be involved in that as well. So we'll have a couple of recruitments to do together. We'll have a couple of contracts to do together. And then the piece that I was getting involved in was transportation and economic development for my Assistant Town Manager role. And he's very well-versed in that. That was his concentration in his master's degree, so.
He'll be involved in the fire chief?
Yes, he will. Yep, that's on our transition plan list as well.
It is interesting that you know, and I'm glad you raised that because when I first arrived here, we had an HR director, which ultimately didn't work out. I ended up recruiting for an Assistant Town Manager who actually had a strong HR background. So, so it actually worked out in the, in the scheme of things, the way it was. Now, it's, Mike doesn't possess all that skill, the same skill set that Mary Beth has, but, but he has a good skill set. And I think that's ultimately what has attracted me. And not only that, but I want to practice what I preach and try to build that capacity within the organization for the transition plans. Because quite honestly, as I look at the managers market right now, it's abysmal. Abysmal, to the point where there are no good candidates out there right now. There are very few. And the ones that are coming, there's a few years away because there's, there's a new crop of candidates coming up, but they're just not there yet. And they don't have the assistant experience to step into that role.
So with, with eliminating that HR position and, you know, you kind of taking that, who in-house has that in-depth HR knowledge?
Well, there's actually, it comes in multiple ways. I was a former HR director myself, all right? So, and not only that, the, we have an assistant, an HR assistant, a specialist in our office.
She does all of our onboarding. She handles our HRIS stuff, our software for applicant tracking. And she's probably the best in the state at FMLA and those kind of things. She's great at interpreting contracts and all of that. So she's got a lot of knowledge. She's part-time, but she'll be a great asset to Mike on those technical things.
And then also.
And I'm only going to be a phone call away.
Right, and essentially, and then also, we have HR counsel available to us, which is, we didn't have that function prior to Mary Beth coming here, but we built that in, which is, he's on a retainer, so we just call him.
He writes all of our policies.
Whenever we need him, we just call him.
And does a lot of the training on our policies as well, so.
So we've got that function built in.
But I think we, you know, have given enough time that I think that will create a, a good transition, a strong one. Mike's joining the association that I'm the Chair of, the State Association. And, you know, every day, we're providing research through and advice through a listserv. And we have meetings eight times a year. So I think, I think we'll get him up to speed. He's got, you know, you can't teach attitude and he's got it and apt, you know, he'll learn the skill.
Anything else, Bill?
That's it. That's all I have.
Mary Beth?
My update was just that we're going to be engaging in collective bargaining with, we had our first meeting with the library. We're going to continue that, hoping to sit down with FIRE soon. And we also are scheduling successor negotiations with Dispatch. And the Human Services Director, Vicki Lowe's retirement, that search is going well. It closes on June 30th. We have probably, I think, sixty or seventy, sixty-six as of before this meeting, good candidates. So we'll be using our template for recruitment and having an interview process that hopefully will get us a great candidate.
When's Vicki's last day?
End of July.
End of July.
So we should, we should probably have somebody, you know, we're hoping to do phone interviews like July 1st and then sit-down interviews mid-July and then hopefully make an offer by the end of the month.
Maybe a little bit of a gap, but.
Yeah, a week or two, like nothing more than a vacation week would have been if she was away.
Now, that pool of sixty or seventy good applicants, has that been whittled down?
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it as being a pool of good seventy candidates. So it's more, it's more down to.
They're getting better as the time goes on. No, we're, Bill, myself and Mike are going to be the screening committee. So right now, I'd say we'll, you know, we'll have a good crop to phone interview, maybe five to ten out of that group.
Which is actually fine.
Yeah, it's good.
Right. I think that's it.
Right, motion to adjourn. Madam Clark?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, she made second. All those in favor?
Right.
Night, everybody.
Good night.